So we'd like to switch the order, please, between four and five. Is everybody in favor of that?
Yeah.
Do we have a motion in a second?
I'll make a motion to switch the order of the agenda as mayor sees fit.
Everyone vote, please. And that passes five to nothing. Thank you. The next item is a Pacifica Resource Center annual report.
So, I have a couple of materials to hand out. Oh, we have a clicker. Thank you so much for having us. My name's Anita Reese. I'm the executive director of the Pacifica Resource Center.
I'm Chris Hunter. I'm the president of the Pacifica Resource Center.
So I thought I'd just go through our slides and explain the materials that I provided for you all. So, two years ago, PRC conducted a strategic plan. We actually went through and had a consultant who interviewed about 50 folks in the community, supporters, donors, staff, board members, volunteers, clients, a variety of folks, just to get a sense of where we are and where we want to go. So this is really a report back on our strategic plan in general, and then a little bit about where we're going, and then a special presentation about the census, which is coming up as well. So, we'll start off by saying that our mission is to support the economic security of Pacifica families and individuals by providing a safety net of food, housing assistance, and other critical services, including coaching, advocacy, information, and referrals. So, pretty broad in general. And our vision really is to assure the basic needs of every Pacifican are met, so that each member of our community has the opportunity to thrive, whatever that means to folks in the community. We've been around for 40 years doing exactly this. So this is just a review in terms of the work that we've done over the last year. Provided 600, over 600,000 pounds of food that benefited 27,000 Pacifica children, adults and seniors. Prevented homelessness and sheltered 122 Pacificans. We prepare taxes, so last year we provided 188 households with tax preparation services for free, generating $220,000 in refunds and saving taxpayers over $40,000 in tax preparation fees. In addition, I think it was 22% of the folks that we provided tax services actually saved a portion of their refund, some for the first time ever. We also helped 158 Pacifica youths for the new school year with grade-specific school supplies. So we don't just provide back-to-school supplies and backpacks. We actually look to see what each student needs based on their grade. We combine all of the grade lists from each of the schools, so that all of the students, regardless of what school they go to, get exactly what they need, and most often more than what they need, which they can share with the class. We provided holiday support to 224 children through our holiday gift program, as well as Thanksgiving assistance to 527 Pacificans. And we also provided 300 showers to homeless Pacificans, helping them prepare for work, job interviews, and housing search. You can't really see this, but on your printouts, this is a breakdown of our revenue and our expenses. So you can see that the biggest revenue that we have is actually in-kind support. I believe it's $505,000 that we receive primarily from Second Harvest Food Bank. So if PRC wasn't here, we would lose that resource in this community. In addition, we've got our government funding, some of which comes from Pacifica, some of which comes from our grant, our contract with San Mateo County. And then we have a variety of foundation funding, corporate funding, and individual donor funding. You'll also see that primarily our expenses are staffing costs, since the work that we do is primarily staff-run. And then the second highest expense is really our in-kind support as well, I think, because I can't read it either. Right, 36% is in-kind, and then 45% is salaries and benefits. So the purpose of our strategic plan was really to look at the organization as a whole. We became a nonprofit, an independent nonprofit in 2016, and that was the time that we decided we really wanted to look back and then look ahead. So again, it was, we had consultative assistance. We did research, assessments, and interviews, as I mentioned, with 50 different supporters, funders, donors, volunteers, clients, and other community stakeholders. And was really for us to be able to figure out strategically what direction we wanted to go in, and also evaluate our current capacity to move forward with our strategic plan. So we came up with three main goals. One was to maintain our services, so continue to serve the 1 in 10 Pacifica families that we provide services to, most of which have no or extremely low income. To advocate for more resources to come to Pacifica by documenting the needs of our community, expanding and piloting creative solutions and services, including homeless services, and advocating for more county resources for Pacifica specifically. And then lastly, we wanted to expand. So we wanted to really increase those who are seeing, who are using our services to folks who have higher incomes but really still are struggling to make ends meet. So when you think about how expensive it is to live in this community, we know that we're missing a significant section of the population who could really benefit from our services. So a good example is if you look back at the Great Recession, when folks were losing their homes, we actually have funding that could have paid for mortgage. And so when someone got behind on their mortgage, if they had come to PRC, we might have actually been able to save their homes. But instead, what happened is they came to us when they lost their homes, when they used all of their savings, because they believed that was when they could come and see us. And we don't need to wait that long, and we really want to expand our services, so we can catch those folks before they lose their homes or spend all of their savings in their retirement to stay housed in Pacifica. So, let's see. We went, and what we found in terms of our current capacity is that we needed to increase our staff capacity to really be able to execute all of these goals. So part of that is our case managers, making sure that they were prepared to provide support to folks who have higher incomes and different needs. Oftentimes, what we see are folks who are struggling to make ends meet, so they're in crisis. And this may be a very different population, so we wanted to make sure that folks have that capacity. And we're working on it, because we're still working on that section of our work. Really wanting to look at how the new building, because all of this was happening at the same time. We became an independent nonprofit, we did our strategic plan, and then we got a new building installed. So all of these things happened at the same time. So it was really a lot of change, and wanting to really adapt to those changes. So the next piece was really now learning what pre-crisis means. That's what we've termed the folks who have higher incomes but are not necessarily coming in for service. We recognize that pre-crisis isn't the best word. Nobody likes to think of themselves being in a crisis. So we are, we have hired a consultant who's come in and is doing some additional interviewing and trying to really figure out, how can we frame our work and expand our work, so that folks feel more comfortable coming in to use our services? So we're just starting that work now, and hope to have some recommendations to changes to our, to our programs in June. Okay. Moving on. So the first goal was maintaining our services. And with maintaining our services, like I mentioned, it's 1 in 10 families that we currently serve. And so some of our measurable goals was that we wanted to see an increase in the number of services that we provided by 25%. So in our first year, we saw an 11% increase. This year, we're looking at close to a 30% increase partway through the year. So we'll know a little bit more by the end of this fiscal year, which is just coming up. We also wanted to maintain our 300 volunteers who help us by providing 7,700 hours per year, and over the next couple of years, get some feedback from them as well about what it is that they would want to have a fulfilling volunteer program with us, as well as increasing our volunteer hours by 25% in this current year. So we're working on that as well. So the next goal was advocating and monitoring services. So part of that work is really doing our one-day homeless count, really paying attention to the trends that are happening in Pacifica in terms of our services, and making sure that our partners in the county recognize the increases in certain services, so that we can try to access more of those resources. So some of that is part of what's happening with coordinated entry, which is the way that homeless services are now provided at the county level, and just making sure that the folks that we're referring are getting into shelter at the same rate as other areas. And then lastly, our third was increasing and expanding our services. So as I mentioned, we've hired a consultant who's helping us to figure out how we can provide those services and what kinds of changes we need to make to our existing services, so that folks will feel more comfortable coming in. Some of the things that I've mentioned to you all before is our grocery delivery program. We're looking to expand that on Fridays, potentially combined with a grocery rescue program that would provide weekly grocery delivery to folks in the northeast part of town. So we've piloted that through our family harvest program, targeting folks who are working and are unable to make it to the distribution once a month. And so we're looking at really expanding that work and seeing what else we might be able to do, checking in with them as well, to see how useful it's been. But that's one of the ways that we think that we can make things easier to access, not just for our current clients, but for folks who are already hesitant to come in for our services. So the first step with our strategic plan was a tactical plan, which we had immediately after our program. But as I'm sure you all know, you have a plan. It sits on a shelf, doesn't always get implemented. So we are working really hard to make that happen, which is why, although it's not as quickly as we would have liked, we are in that process for the pre-crisis program now. And annually, our strategic planning and policy committee is reviewing our work, so that we can see where we are and how we need to tweak that as needed. So in terms of our overall program and services, any questions, you can always give us a call at 650-738-7470. My extension's three. Marina Casianos is our direct services manager, and she can be found at extension two. But either one of us can answer any questions, as well as anybody who calls, they can speak with somebody. So now I'm going to turn it over to our census for 2020. One of the things that, as you all know, is really important, and one of the things that we use all the time for our stats and information, is the census. So coming up for the census in April of 2020, just want to make sure that folks know that it's coming, and to encourage folks to be involved. This is just one of the slides that they put together in general about what's at stake. Oftentimes, the census determines how much in terms of federal funding, congressional apportion, apportionment, redistricting, and policy budget and program decisions, and then just making sure that all, all parts of the community are represented. So for a lot of reasons, it's important to have an accurate count. And like I said, I use this census all the time to determine how many folks are living below 80% of median, as well as below the poverty line, just to get a sense of how many folks we really are looking at serving in Pacifica. So it's really important to have that accurate count. So some of the new challenges this time around is that it's underfunded. About 50% has been cut since 2010. There's fewer local offices, less field staff. They're planning to do mostly online, which means that there are some folks who aren't going to be able to do that, although there will still be a paper one. And then just overall fear and mistrust of the government in general. And then there was a question that was going to be on about citizenship, which I believe has been dropped, but still the fear is out there. So we need your support in general. Want to, just letting folks know how important the census is, promoting actually upcoming Census Bureau jobs, which pay very well, and then just support the complete count efforts in general. You can't read this either, but there are jobs available. They range from, I think, $32 to $35 an hour. And while they are short-term jobs, it's an opportunity to increase income for folks if it's just an extra job. I believe, I've heard that the enumerators have pretty flexible schedules, because it's times when people may be home, where they might be able to catch them. So for folks who want a little extra income, this might be a really good way to do that. And then lastly, on April 1st, there's a launch at 1:30 in Redwood City, and I hope that folks can make it. It's open to anybody. You can go to smcensus.org, and it's at the, at the news corner, and register to go. You'll find out a lot more information in general about what's coming up, as well as potential funding opportunities for folks who want to help with getting the word out about the census. Again, back to us. Sorry, I didn't give you any chance to say anything, so.
She handled all. I just want to say how proud we are at the Pacifica Resource Center of the work that Anita does, and the staff, and the volunteers that make this one of the essential core agencies of San Mateo County, fulfilling the responsibilities we have to our citizens, the residents. The census will be the 24th census in the United States of America. It's kind of amazing. It gives you a little sense of history. In 1975, there were 35,000 people in Pacifica. I don't think there's a lot more than that today. The importance of the census can't be overestimated, or it just is so crucial. And so to find out what San Mateo County does, please go to the website, check it out. We have a year from April 1st until the very first actual beginning of the census on April 1, 2020. It's going to be fun to count, everybody. Thank you for your support also. It's very important to the Resource Center. We greatly appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Deirdre.
Thanks for the detailed report. I had the honor of sitting in on some of your working sessions, and I appreciate your due diligence and coming together with a report. And interestingly enough, I was just reading an article on America's high-earning poor, and after I read it, I realized the article is actually four years old. So it's gotten worse, and I appreciate you forward-thinking, so thanks.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Mary.
So thank you. Thank you for everything that you do at the Pacifica Resource Center. You know, I have been able to do outreach in our community and do warm handoffs directly to your staff, and the response is just a beautiful thing, because when there's a response that's so quick and so pleasant, it gives people this, this sense of hope that can get them, like, from one place to another. No matter what the outcomes are, it's that hope that really matters so much, and I appreciate it a lot. I also want to thank you for doing Ask Me Anything. If you guys haven't seen that, there's a series of questions and answers that Anita has put out. There's a link that we can send out. It's been very helpful. I've sent it out to lots of people. It's a really great way to get information so quickly and thoroughly from you, so I really appreciate that. I have one question about the showers.
Yes.
And so you said you did 300 showers last year. Is that onsite, or is there, there's a mobile? Is there a mobile?
No, that was specifically onsite in our shower. Yeah. So in our portable, we were able to include a shower, so we've been able to provide 300 onsite from our program this year, last year.
Great. Thank you so much, Anita.
Sue.
I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunities for people in the community who might not otherwise have a chance to engage with the Resource Center. I've been involved with the Lions Club for a long time, and it's definitely something that is part of our planning every year. I know there are a number of other groups in town that do the same thing, factor into their annual planning for activities. What are we going to do for the Resource Center? So I think it's truly a way that we're bringing the entire community together, and I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Mike.
I just wanted to say thank you, Anita, and to her staff. They do a wonderful job, and I know they're an institution in Pacifica that seems every political stripe in Pacifica supports. That's quite an achievement.
I agree with everyone else. I've always had a high esteem for what you people do, and appreciate everything. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Next, we have consent. Is there anybody who would like to add anything, remove anything, anyone from the public who would like to speak on the consent calendar? Seeing no one from the public, Mike O'Neill.
I move that we approve the consent calendar as is.
I'll second.
That passes five to nothing. And the next is oral communications. I have several cards of Teresa Dyer, followed by Robert Willenjohn, and Scott Lindner.
Good evening. Teresa Dyer, 1408 Crespi Drive. First of all, I'd like to congratulate President Trump on his exoneration, and let him know that I received his third letter today, and want to thank him for listening to my advice and taking my advice. Second, I'd like to address some important issues that the city and some of the complaints that were directed to me as they knew I was coming to the meeting tonight. I will list them. Why did we wait so long for the rainy season before all this construction has taken place? Why is there no free parking at the community center because of this construction? And why are we contemplating on putting the library on the ballot again when it cost us so much money the first time, and I doubt if it'll get passed this time? We have other issues. For instance, our pension bonds. How are they going to be paid? I mean, San Mateo County is struggling with it, and I was on the 2011 grand jury, and that was one of my committees, and it was a problem then. So now we're in 2019, so I think you better think of that before and set your priorities straight. Also, I'd like to know who's on our transportation authority. Are any of you city council members on the transportation authority, or did we lose that $54 million where our highway will never be widened now, which is a hazard? And the other thing is, the Eureka Square pedestrian carousway, somebody wanted to know why we replaced that. I don't know. I mean, I don't live in that area, but that was one of them. The other complaint that was brought to me was the RV parking on Oceania Boulevard. And I noticed that there were mattresses thrown on the lawns there. It's very dangerous going around the curve, trying to avoid them. So I hope you'll take some of these things in consideration, and I'll advise you or the city manager on some other things, but I know my time has run out. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Willenjohn, Scott Lindner, and Shirley Gibbs.
Greetings, Honorable Mayor and Council. I'm here because I've been asked to read a letter on behalf of the Ocean Shore Railroad Restoration Committee, and I just want all our listeners to know that the reason we're here is we've been asked to move the railcar, Car 1409, and it's not ready, it's not a completed railcar. So I'll start with the reading. Pacifica's history is part of her ongoing, unique character. The Pacifica Historical Society protects and promotes this rich, very vibrant history. Our Little Brown Church was rescued from dilapidation by the Pacifica Historical Society and Pacifica residents. The Pacifica Coside Museum is now well-known and admired. It is becoming a hub of action, especially this year, as we get closer to the 250th commemoration of the Portola Expedition and the first sighting of San Francisco Bay by the Spanish. The Pacifica Historical Society, along with the San Mateo County and the City of Pacifica, are active in forming the Aloney Portola Heritage Trail to tracing the path of Portola throughout 90 miles in San Mateo County. We are pleased that the council leadership in the past has designated this part of Sharp Park as a, as an historic district. We welcome the plan to provide more vigorous citizen input and planning for this area. The Ocean Shore Railroad brought tourists and investors to our shores from San Francisco in the 1905 and until 1920. The Pacifica Historical Society representatives of culture-loving Pacificans brought a 110-year-old, unique, original railcar back to Pacifica for restoration. Much work has already been done by many volunteers to restore Car 1409 towards making it ready for permanent display. This historic car, 1409, and the Little Brown Church deserve a prominent place near one another, once again, in the historic district of Pacifica. More than 100 years ago, the Ocean Shore Railcar, Number 1409, ran right past the Little Brown Church in its present location. These two subjects of historical significance can also contribute economically to our community. The museum is already a center of cultural and educational activity, and the railcar will expand the museum's significance and draw of visitors, providing additional permanent historical display opportunities. We request that the city enable the placement of the restored Ocean Shore Car 1409 at the corner of Francisco and Salada Avenues near the Little Brown Church. This location will provide maximum visibility and facilitate the use of this unique, one-of-a-kind relic as an important addition to our museum. The current site must be vacated by mid-November. Once the car is moved, we will secure and protect the site at no expense.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you very much for your support.
Thank you. Scott, Shirley, and then Robert Twiggs.
Thank you, council members. My name is Scott Lindner. For the past 15 years, I have been the project manager for the restoration of Pacifica Historical Society's.
Scott, can you bring the microphone up a little?
Yes, thank you. For the past 15 years, I've been the project manager for the restoration of Ocean Shore Railroad Car Number 1409. I would like to acknowledge the effort put in by many volunteers to bring the car to its current state. In the summer of 2003, our crew spent three months stabilizing the car, and it was moved from Sebastopol to Shamrock Ranch. There, the owners graciously offered space to begin restoration. From 2005 to 2013, our crews rebuilt the entire structural carriage, fabricated and installed new framing and siding. Due to vandalism, we were forced to relocate the car, and with your permission, the car sits at Valamar currently. Work has progressed slowly with the Pacifica- Work has progressed slowly with the Pacifica Historical Society supplying a new shelter to protect from the weather this winter. I would like to also acknowledge the public relations we have promoted with news articles in the past, a documentary film which won two amateur film awards, spots on Channel 26, a one-of-a-kind coin that was cast in copper, bronze, silver, and gold, and acknowledgement from the City of Pacifica for our efforts. At this time, I would like to ask the city to cooperate with the Pacifica Historical Society in securing, number one, a site to complete the construction of the car, and two, a venue to display and invite the public to enjoy. This historic project is such a small price to pay for saving Pacifica's history, thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Shirley, then Robert, and then Deidra.
Mayor Barless, council members. The Historical Society acquired the Ocean Shore Railroad passenger car from a field in Sebastopol in 2003 and had it transported to Shamrock Ranch in Pacifica. Preliminary work was done there, but after several bouts of vandalism, it was moved to a concrete pad at the Calera Creek Water Recycling Plant, that was in 2013. We did not have the funds available to begin serious restoration because we were committed to a long-term project, saving a historical landmark, the Little Brown Church, and creating a community museum. After 12 long years of fundraising, concerts, castle tours, rummage sales, and so on, we opened the doors to the Pacifica Community Museum in August of 2015. Since then, our efforts have been directed to restoring the passenger car. We sponsor a two-day rummage sale each month with all funds deposited in the Ocean Shore Railroad account. So far, we've raised $75,000, and we received a generous donation from Pacifica's first city manager, Carl Baldwin, of $25,000. We urgently need a grant writer to help us secure additional funding, and we will continue to sponsor fundraising events. Last Monday, 17 letters were sent to contractors to solicit bids from qualified craftsmen on a time and materials basis. A summarized list was included for completion of bid components, beginning with wall framing, roof assembly, and interior finishes. Contractors may work on their own chosen time. And we have a walk-through scheduled for Tuesday, April the 2nd at 11:00 a.m., and again on Thursday, April 4th at 1:00, and you are all welcome to come down and see what's been done on the train. Hopefully, it won't take us 12 years to finish this project, as it did with the Little Brown Church building. We respectfully ask for your support.
Thank you, Shirley. Robert, followed by Deidra Crowe, and then Pat Kramer.
Greetings, council members. My name's Robert Twig, I'm from Pacifica, I live in Pacifica. I first came associated with the Pacifica Historical Society, 2005. I, actually, in 1982, I volunteered for a cable station when it was Channel 8, and I became involved with the local station when I returned, when I first bought a house here. And one thing I've noticed, I'm the director of the Footprints of Pacifica, we've done 150 shows, and I'm a lot better behind the camera than in front of it, so. Anyway, we've done 150 shows, and I've seen these guys at work, I've documented their work, we've followed the museum from when we started the show throughout, we've documented the railcar several times when it moved. And one thing I've noticed about this association is they're really good at what they do. They focus on a task, they raise money any way they can, rummage sales and everything, and you've seen what they've done with the Little Brown Church, it's incredible museum, it's still, you know, work in progress, it's always growing and stuff, and it seems just so much sense to have the railcar next to the museum. Again, they just do a really good job, look at the tapestry over there, that's a bit of their work. And anyway, they also do great cheese. April 6th, 2019, sponsored by the Pacifica Historical Society, it's just a, you can find out more information at their website. Anyway, in closing, what I'd like to say is, it just makes perfect sense for it to be there, and anyway, I hope I can document it in the future.
Thank you. Deidra, Pat Kramer, and then Andy Carl.
Good evening, my name is Deidra Crowe, and I'm here to represent the Historical Society in our request for placement of the car at Salada Avenue and Francisco Boulevard. I've called Pacifica my hometown since 1954, and this is the largest project I've ever been a part of. It's extraordinary. This car is 50-something feet long, and it's very tall, and it's very large, and lots of volunteers are putting in a lot of work, and I'm so very proud of all of them. Our vision for the historic visualization of West Sharp Park, the heartbeat of Pacifica, will include this car. We also have come so far in saving and keeping the last remaining piece of rolling stock on the Ocean Shore Railroad, please help us continue and finish it. You can also join us April 8th and 22nd as we have our, continue our planning meetings, which will further bring this to realization, and the realization of our dream, and help bring it to reality. Thank you very much. This is a beautiful rendering by John Maria that shows the placement of the car next to the museum.
Pat Kramer, Sean Stack, and then Andy Carl.
Hi, I'm Patricia McCarthy Kramer, and I live at 5 East Lake Avenue in Sharp Park. I lived at this address from 1947 to 1965, and then returned to Pacifica and my parents' former home in 2008. I'm strongly in favor of locating the restored Ocean Shore Railroad Car 1409 near the Pacifica Coastside Museum, which parenthetically, I think, will always be called the Little Brown Church, even though it's a secular building now. Tonight, I speak to you as a currently active board member of the Pacifica Historical Society, but I'd also like to speak to you on behalf of my parents, who are very active in Pacifica and interested in its deep and colorful history. My father, Carl McCarthy, spent the last 15 years of his life promoting what we know here as the Discovery Site, the location on Sweeney Ridge, where the members of the Portola Expedition were the first Europeans to see San Francisco Bay. When the site was recognized as a national historic landmark, it was but a few acres, and now it's part of a much larger piece of land of the GGNRA, the Golden Gate National Recreation Area. My father's efforts are a wonderful example of how persistence and determination can bring about widespread recognition of important historical events, and I think what the Historical Society is currently involved in doing is a similar example of persistence and determination. My mother, Grace McCarthy, was mayor of Pacifica three times and active in many local organizations. When she was awarded the Pacifica Community Foundation Koschlin Prize in 1984, she thought deeply about which local organization she would endow with the $10,000 that came as part of the award. She chose the Pacifica Historical Society, not one of the oldest of the local nonprofit organizations, but she thought it had a lot of potential to put its funds to good purposes of enriching our citizens through an appreciation of their history. Citing these two historic landmarks close together increases both in terms of public access and appreciation. If my parents were alive today, I know they would be sitting right with us enthusiastically requesting the approval of the city council to place the railroad car near the museum in the historic Sharp Park District of Pacifica. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Sean Stack, followed by Andy Carl.
Hello, my name's Sean, I'm here today to talk about bicycle riding in town. There's a large group of us in town that have been working very hard to try to get a bike park built, I know you've heard me come up and speak about it before. Bicycle riding is a pretty big sport nowadays. Next year, in Japan 2020 Olympics, bicycle freestyling is now an Olympic sport. There's a very strong American team, I'm pretty excited about to watch happen, but we'll see where that goes. In town here, bicycle riding is very active, there's a lot of people that come to town just to ride. And when I come into this room, I kind of get frustrated because I look at the tapestry over here, it says the activities, no bicycles on it, but that is what it is. Our group is working very hard to actively get this going, we have a lot of things in the future coming up, we're doing a big fundraiser in April, I think the weekend before the Earth Day event, we're trying to do something at the local bike shop. We are signed up, I think, to Clean Frontierland on Earth Day, and also we'd like to try to maybe do a little bicycle show at the beach after, something like that, but we just want to let you know that we're still actively, you know, working and having our own meetings upon meetings to move forward with this, and we appreciate your guys' support, and very excited, and I like what I'm hearing about the train, my kids love trains, I'd say, bring it up and put it next to the Brown Church, because Pacifica needs to stick together. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Andy Carl.
Hello, my name's Andy Carl, I'm a local contractor, born and raised in Pacifica, I learned to ride my bike here, I want to pass that passion on to my daughter, if possible. I'm here on behalf of the Pacifica Bike Park Committee. We are currently putting a team together of local enthusiasts, as well as local businesses, to help fund this bike park, and everyone that's included so far is very excited for the opportunity, as well as we're getting positive feedback from the community. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, that's the last card I have for oral communications, is there anyone else who'd like to speak under oral communications? Seeing none, we'll move on to council communications. Deidra.
Two Sundays ago, there was a gentleman that was down at Sharp Park doing a wave-powered turbine test for energy, and he actually had come and spoken to us at three-minute oral communications one time, so he's going to be back, he learned a lot, I went down to visit him and his fellow scientists, it was really cool, it was really neat, and he learned a lot, he's got to do some more work, and he'll be back, but I also connected him with Peninsula Clean Energy, so they're super stoked to be talking to this guy about the potential of a new energy source, and you heard it first here, folks, if it does happen, so that's pretty noteworthy. I also wanted to thank Mary Beer and her organization for putting on the Youth and Family Summit at IBL, it was very well-attended, it was always well-organized and super special, I attended the vaping, the breakout on vaping, and, you know, there's some very well-educated, very in-the-know hip people that need to know more, including myself, and everything you thought you know, you need to know more, so, Mary, thank you for doing that, and kudos to all those parents who showed up with their kids, it was really neat to be able to see those connections. I attended the Ocean Shore Railroad Planning Meeting, the restoration meeting, and these folks have their act together. I am very interested in seeing where my suggestion lands that I proposed during our goal-setting session, discussion kind of got cut short, but I'm interested to see where we end up on that, I think it's April 24th, we may be seeing that come back to council in our goal-setting there. I also attended the Friends of San Pedro, Tracking Homo sapiens Paths to the New World down at San Pedro County Park, just kind of by happenstance, and it's pretty interesting, if you don't get out much, go down to San Pedro County Park, you'll learn a little bit more if you show up on a Saturday at, you know, 4:00, and there's actually a lot of people there, learn more about where we came from, and on whose backs do we stand, that kind of comes back to the Ocean Shore Railroad and all of our history. Just another shout-out for Earth Day, everybody's been talking about it, we're celebrating it here in Pacifica on April 27th. If you haven't picked your site that you're going to be volunteering, check out the website, if you need a site, and you're over the age of 13, and you are ready to work, you can sign up at my spot, you know where my email address is, and I'm always looking for some good, strong folks to help me out at the waste collection site, that's where everything comes back, and you sort of are able to make the connections from everything that comes from the north to the south end of town, we meet up here in the middle. I want to thank Recology for donating the waste cans, and I want to thank the City of Pacifica for working with us on all that collaboration. And I think I heard something about a bike park committee, I love that, thank you for doing that. We are, I think that made our goal-setting, in that, in the year 1920, which is our next fiscal year, which starts in July, we will be having a study session, so the more cohesiveness you can come together with, the more money you can come up with, the better these discussions are going to be, so, right on. And if you're going to be doing a show down at the beach, can you connect with us on that? We'd love to help organize it and just be safe. And that's all I have, thanks.
No other lights? Lights?
I didn't know you had a pusher.
Mary.
Okay, so I've been pretty busy the last couple weeks, I went and visited Recology, spoke with Chris Porter, I want to thank her very much for filling me in on everything that goes on down there. I spent some time with Chief Stidle at the Police Department this morning, so thank you for that, chief, I appreciate it. And I've also been in touch with the bike park group, keep showing up, keep showing up, you guys. The Age Friendly Task Force met to discuss the data collected in the focus groups, and started the conversation about projects related to two major unmet needs, housing and transportation, so the next couple meetings will be looking at projects, and then include the projects in the application to the World Health Organization. I went to the library advisory meeting, I attended the Emergency Preparedness and Safety Committee, and by the way, it's Tsunami Preparedness Week, and so there's information on the city website about that, and also make sure that you apply for the free San Mateo County Alert System, so you can get alerts for everything, including traffic, because there's been lots of calls and issues about traffic, so you actually get the alert, so you know what's going on. What else? I attended HART, which is the Housing Endowment and Regional Trust Committee. It was really good for me to attend this meeting and to see all of the work that's going on around housing across the county, you know, we're in a real housing crisis, and sometimes it's hard to see past the crisis, but it was really great to see all the projects that are happening all around the county, so I look forward to participating specifically in that group moving forward. I also attended the Alone Portola Heritage Trail Meeting, so we're preparing for the 250th anniversary of the Portola Exhibition and honoring the Alone People, so there's going to be plenty of activities, and we're reaching out to the community to see if businesses and community groups would like to participate in that event, or those events, there are going to be several. And Home for All, the community conversation around housing is happening on April 13th at the Community Center, please, we need all different kinds of perspectives around that table, it's important that everybody shows up and talks to each other so we can come up with solutions together.
Thank you. Sue Beckmeyer.
It's been not such a busy couple weeks, but the Economic Development Committee met on the 12th, and the Library Advisory Committee on the 13th, and I had a chance to attend the Pacifica, the Police and Fire Awards, excuse me, that's sponsored by the Peninsula Council of Lions. We had two honorees, Captain Joseph Spanheimer and Officer Joseph Gomez. Went to the Pacifica Democrats Meeting, and there was a presentation on housing, focusing a lot on affordable housing, and our own Kevin Woodhouse was presenting. I was able to attend a brief portion of the Youth and Family Summit, I got to participate in a session on social media, which is not my strong suit, and learned some stuff, so thank you, Mary. And I had a chance on Saturday to participate in the planting and maintenance morning down on Palmetto with the Beautification Advisory Committee, so, thank you.
Mike. Mike. Mike has nothing. Wow, Mike silent. I went to a lot of meetings, so I'm going to do it quick. I went to the Colma Creek Meeting, the City Selection Committee, where we chose two people to serve on a task force for CASA. CASA is all about housing. You'll hear that three times in my speech. I went to the City and County Association of Government Legislative Meeting and Regular Meeting, where we also talked about CASA and the express lanes on Highway 101. Then the City and County Association of Government Water Committee, which you're going to hear about later, so I won't say anything about that. We had a meeting with Jerry Hill on the CASA compact, also about affordable housing. I went to the Lions, the Democrats. I dropped into the Historical Society, although I was late. It was Meals on Wheels monthly, or, I'm sorry. It was what? I went on a Meals on Wheels ride-along. It was really a great thing to do. We delivered meals to 15 different people. And then we went back to the Community Center and had lunch there. It was the best day of all because they had corned beef and cabbage. Everyone was really happy to see us. It was the day after St. Patrick's. And it was a great experience. The people range from all kinds of different types of people, which was great. I went to the Skyline President's Breakfast. I attended the City and County Association of Government plus Home for All meeting on the CASA compact again. So you see that goes throughout all the meetings I've been to. Some of the complaints I've had from people are mainly the RVs and trailers and how difficult it is to, the number has increased dramatically and how difficult it is to turn the corners when there are large RVs parked there. And also, I had two complaints that people fell again on the San Francisco, City of San Francisco berm. I know they're going to work on it at some point, but they haven't yet, maybe because of the rain. But people keep falling because there are big, huge divots in it. And that's it for me. So staff communications.
Thank you, Mayor Vardalos. Councilmember Kevin Woodhouse, City Manager. I just have a few comments. Since you mentioned the San Francisco berm and the rutting out there, we have been talking to San Francisco. I was out there, took a couple photos, sent those in. So there's some pretty extreme rutting. I don't believe we've really received what their follow-up action is going to be at this point, but they are aware of the situation there. One update I wanted to mention is, as you're aware, we received a really large bequest to the Senior Services Program from Cirka Nukannon, which we are very pleased about. But I did just want to point out that it was an interesting subtext to the headline in the Tribune. It says, "Woman Gives $2 Million to Senior Programs, Nothing to City, Only to Pacifica Senior Services." So I'm just pointing that out to make it very publicly clear that senior services is the City of Pacifica. I just returned last week, spent a couple of days in Reno at the International City and County Managers Association Western Regional Conference. It was an excellent conference. About 150 city representatives, city managers from around the western region were there. The themes of the conference really centered around innovation was a strong theme and not just technological innovation, but, you know, innovation as a frame of mind and what, you know, running through all, you know, through people, services, and as well as technology. Many other themes. I facilitated a cannabis roundtable discussion, learned a lot from other cities and shared a lot from Pacifica as well. So it was really an excellent conference. And then I was going to mention the Home for All on Saturday, April 13th. Breakfast provided. Thank you, Councilmember Beer, for mentioning that.
Thank you. So we have no public hearings, so we're going to move on to council consideration. This is, the first item is number three regarding the Samteo County Flood and Sea Level Rise Resiliency Agency.
Great.
And we have...
I'm going to kick this off and then I'm going to pass it off to Jim. I'll introduce him here in a second. This item, the creation of the Flood and Sea Level Rise Resiliency Agency, the FSLRRA, we haven't really worked out a good acronym for it yet. But this has been in the works for a while. Mayor Vardalos was involved in a committee, a CCAG committee, during the development and, you know, kind of formational ideas stage of this. And former Public Works Director Van Ocampo was involved in the Technical Staff Committee for this. And really, what I'll summarize here, and again, the concept could be a very productive agency if formed and functioning will really help leverage funding sources, federal funding sources, for all of the projects throughout Samteo County related to flood protection, sea level rise, coastal erosion, and more. So it's an opportunity for all of the cities and the county to come together and, in a unified voice, compete nationally for these critical dollars because, as we know from our Sea Level Rise Adaptation Planning Process, these projects are immensely expensive. And we need the money now. And we'll, hopefully, this agency will help us work towards that success. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Jim Porter, Samteo County Public Works Director.
Thank you, Kevin. Mayor Vardalos, members of the council. My name is Jim Porter. I'm the Director of Public Works for Samteo County. By the way, we're calling it the Fizzler.
Fizzler.
So if you want an acronym, call it the Fizzler. We eat Twizzlers when we talk about the Fizzler. Let me tell you what we're going to talk about tonight. City Manager Woodhouse gave a good lead-up to why we need this agency. But we'll talk about why we need it, what the aspects of the proposal are that we're discussing, the schedule, the funding needs, the endorsements we've received to date, and the action requested of your council. So why do we need this agency? Sea level rise impacts are going to be significant. And Pacifica is unfortunately on the bleeding edge of what's going on right now. I don't have to explain the issues that are going on in terms of coastal erosion on the coast side. On the bay side, we're beginning to see issues right now from king tides, not only causing inundation and backup in the storm drain pipes and flooding streets, but king tides combined with a rainstorm causes tremendous flooding. Because when the tides are high, the rain has nowhere to go. So it just gets stuck on the city streets. So it's already happening now. Right now, we are looking at what to do county-wide. So we have many cities on the bay side. We have the county and two cities on the coast side. As Kevin mentioned, these projects are extremely expensive and they're multi-jurisdictional. So water knows no boundaries. It's sort of like traffic. It flows to the area of least resistance. And on the bay side in particular, you have a city such as Foster City that's doing a project to protect their coastline, right next to a city, Samteo, who thankfully has protection. But further north of Samteo, there isn't protection. So really, in order to fully protect for sea level rise, you need to have a uniform, consistent approach county-wide. Things are a little bit different on the coast side, but the issues on the coast side do require a lot of time to figure out what the best solutions are. We are at a disadvantage at pursuing grant funds at this time. If you look to our south, the Santa Clara Valley Water District represents all 12 cities in Santa Clara County. They operate with one voice. They're in Sacramento, they're in Washington, they're getting grants. They're getting grant fundings to protect their seashore. In San Francisco, they speak as one voice as well. They're one city and county, and they definitely are organized. They're in Washington, they're in Sacramento. They recently passed, I believe it was a $300 million bond measure to begin protecting the segment of coastline between Fisherman's Wharf and essentially Oracle Park is what it's called now. That is a down payment on a roughly $2 or $3 billion project to protect the San Francisco waterfront. They're already up in Congress right now looking for money. They got the bond passed, they have the local share. Now they're searching for grants. In Samteo County, we have 20 cities in the county, and right now, we're not organized. So if the City of Pacifica goes for a federal grant, they may be competing with the City of South San Francisco for that same pot of money. We, as a county, need to speak with one voice. We need to prioritize these projects and begin pursuing grant funding. In terms of what we have in this county now, we do have a countywide flood control district. However, its scope is limited. It's only funded in three zones. Those zones are Colma Creek, San Bruno Creek, which is just west of SFO, and San Franciscito Creek, which is down on the border of Samteo County and Santa Clara County. Those are the only zones that receive funding for flood control. And that funding is pre Prop 13 property taxes. So those monies were in place prior to Prop 13 coming into effect. And there is no additional revenue coming in. However, there is a sort of a vessel to begin this agency there. We also can receive benefits from some of the permitting issues that are mandated by the Regional Water Quality Control Board. So, as you know, all the cities in the county are under permits from the regional board to clean up the water that flows into the ocean and the bay. Part of the way to do that is through green infrastructure or regional detention devices that can capture water, treat it, and then release it to the ocean. These structures are fairly expensive to construct. They're usually about $10 to $15 million. And the maintenance on these things are roughly $100,000 to $200,000 a year. Many cities on their own don't have the capacity to either construct or maintain these facilities. If this agency is successful and created, the agency could potentially maintain these structures and construct them at some point. But more importantly, the benefits of that can be shared agency-wide in terms of the reduction in polluting constituents in complying with the regional permit. And finally, I mentioned the maintenance on the facilities. This agency could provide that maintenance. So in terms of process, how we got here. This all began with CCAG. And as Mayor Vardalos mentioned, CCAG formed a water committee, which your mayor is on. That committee consists currently of eight elected officials. And they are essentially the policy body that is advising on the formation of this committee. As City Manager Woodhouse mentioned, there was a staff advisory team, which was really composed of technical experts. But we also had city managers and financial, excuse me, staff in the room to provide recommendations on how we should form this agency. We also retained a consultant, they're called ESA Associates, to walk us through this process. They've been involved in agency formations throughout the state. And they were very vital in allowing us to get through this process in six months. We've held a lot of outreach meetings to date. This is prior to coming to councils, last between July and December. We held a meeting in Pacifica, actually at the Community Center, that was attended by some of your staff and council members. We've been up and down the county trying to get input from folks, how they would like to see this agency formed, what the makeup might be. And we've taken that input and put that together into our proposal. And this proposal has been endorsed by the CCAG Board and the County Board of Supervisors. The graphic that you see is actually the proposal itself in the executive summary. You have the slide deck. At the end of the deck, there will be a link to a website that has all these documents as well so that you'll be able to get there and take a look at it. So what is this proposal? The proposal is to take the existing flood control district, which is managed by the county and is governed by the Board of Supervisors, and essentially repurposing it. What we're talking about doing is divorcing the flood control district from the county and creating its own independent agency and naming a new seven-member board. That board will be composed of two members of the Board of Supervisors, one from District 3, which is the coast side district, and another one elected by the board, and five city council members. Those five council members will come and be appointed by CCAG and come from the different four geographic areas of the county. So north, central, south, and coast side. And then there will be one at-large member. So those will be the proposed governing board. And it will take on new functions. So right now, our flood control district only talks about riverine flooding, which is essentially upland flow. We're changing the charge of this organization to include sea level rise and coastal erosion. So then it will have the powers to begin addressing these issues. We're looking at a three-year startup period. And part of what we'll talk about tonight is funding of that three years. And during that time, this new agency is going to have to come up with a long-term funding source. We believe it's possible in three years, and that's why we're looking at a three-year startup period. During that period, there will obviously be costs. The proposed split in cost is that the county will pay 50% of the share of the costs. And the other 20 cities will essentially provide the other 20%. The total ask is $1.5 million, which will be split amongst all agencies. In order to determine how to spend this money, you need to develop a plan of the project similar to how the Transportation Authority put together Measure A, which is the big transportation funding package. We are calling the, essentially, the Capital Improvement Program an investment plan. And the reason why we're calling it an investment plan is because we're really going to have to look at how we invest the dollars on the coast side, both on the bay side and the coast side, and also what the priority of those projects are and the dollar value. And based on the dollar value, we can then look at how we put together grant packages and project funding scenarios to get this work done. We're conducting public engagement program, oh, excuse me. The next step in this is to conduct a public engagement program. And really, that goes hand-in-hand with the investment plan. Because what works or what is the suggested solution in Pacifica may be different from the suggestion in Half Moon Bay. And I know it's going to be different from the one in Millbrae because it's just different issues. So really, to determine what the solutions are, there needs to be input from elected officials and the community to determine what that is. So that will take place as part of the investment plan. Next up is identifying a reliable, ongoing funding source. So as has been mentioned, these are very expensive projects. And we need to be able to not only have funding for staffing, but also to provide a local match for grant funds. So the first thing that this agency is going to need to do is think about how to get a long-term funding source in place. That can be a parcel tax. It can be, you know, a portion of a sales tax. There's a lot of variety of ways to get that funding, but that needs to be determined, what the appropriate method is and what the amount is. In terms of what we're calling MOU projects, we've already started out and done several projects on the bay side, actually, three projects, that Supervisor Dave Pine provided seed funding for. Those projects are the Bayfront Canal Project in Redwood City, Belmont Creek in Belmont, and Navigable Slough up in South City and San Bruno. These areas are already experiencing flooding, and we're starting to work with them on the solutions up there. And there will also be no disruption to the flood control district projects that are currently ongoing in those subzones. So in terms of where we're at, between June and January of this, June of last year, January of this year, we developed the proposals. Between now and July, we're asking for endorsements from public agencies. And that's the 20 cities as well as the county. And after July, we will begin the startup of the agency, subject to agreement of all of the agencies as well as special legislation that will create this district. One thing I failed to measure to mention is that the change in the district is going to occur through state legislation. Assemblyman Kevin Mullen will be carrying this legislation. It's AB 825. The first hearing on this, I believe, is April 24th in Sacramento. So that's the first tentative date. But that is the, essentially, the vessel that will make the changes in the flood control district. In terms of funding, I mentioned there will be startup costs. So at the beginning, we're asking for a contribution of $1.5 million from the cities in the county. Now, you see the chart up there. It says agency startup costs. The annual budget is $1.1 million. I mentioned $1.5 million. The other $400,000 will be dedicated to those MOU projects and really just for the staffing, just to pay for the staffing costs. And then finally, there is other money that comes into this agency. The flood control district generates about $3.8 million a year. And then CCAG passes through the district about $1.5 million. Actually, the district generates this revenue and is passed through to CCAG for their clean water program. So those are the funding sources that will be used to start the agency up. In terms of the breakdown on how the funding, how it was decided on who pays how much, various scenarios were essentially calculated on how to break this up. Everywhere from an equal split between the 20 cities in the county to the coast side cities should pay more, to doing it by population, to a range. What ended up being the most popular alternative was the range. What ended up being the most popular alternative was the range. And as you see for your city, which the population, I believe, is right around 39,000, you fall into the middle range. So we will be requesting $40,000 for the first three years from Pacifica for startup costs for the agency. In terms of endorsements, we've already gotten endorsements from the CCAG board, as well as our County Board of Supervisors. We've also received endorsements from seven cities thus far. Tonight, we are here in Pacifica. My colleague Larry Patterson is in Daly City. Tomorrow night, we'll be in Woodside, or I'll be in Woodside, and he'll be in Millbrae. So we'll be halfway through this. We've been to Atherton and Menlo Park for informational items. They'll be taking actions later. But we're hoping to complete this process by April 17. So we're requesting that your council endorse the Flood and Sea Level Rise Resiliency Agency Proposal and approve three years' worth of seed funding for the agency startup. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions you have.
Are there any questions from council? Mike?
I know this is something that's been talked to for quite a while, and I think we're all pretty familiar with it in regards to how it works and stuff. But the current funding for those three creeks, I don't believe, in Pacifica, we're not paying a property tax for that, correct? Or is it just the areas affected it? I don't recall it being on my bill.
Is that within the three subzones of the flood control district?
Yeah, the three subzones.
So Pacifica is a member of the Colma Creek subzone. There's a portion of your city that's in that watershed, and that's why Mayor Vardalas attends the Colma Creek flood control sub.
Okay, I just wasn't sure about that. And so they're still going to get their property taxes for their existing projects and needs. And then if there is another parcel tax or tax levied, that will be in addition to that one, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council? Okay, we have one card from the public, Brian Perkins.
Evening, I'm Brian Perkins, Congresswoman Jackie Speer's office, district director. The Congresswoman is supporting this proposal, and in fact, we've been working on it for about five years. And we want to thank Mayor Vardalas for all of her hard work on it, too. It's been a lot of early morning sessions. By the way, she was always early to every session. The reason that I'm here tonight is because Pacifica's a special case in my professional practice, because I work very closely with your city manager and your city engineer all the time, and I'm constantly concerned that we just don't have the resources necessary to meet any of the challenges, frankly. Pacifica regularly qualifies for emergency money, because there's regularly emergencies, unfortunately. There's been an attempt on two different occasions to have the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers give money to Pacifica, but unfortunately, for a variety of technical reasons related to the programs, Pacifica never qualifies. And I should say, I think you have four or five of the key decision-makers from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers who live in Pacifica, one of which is within walking distance of Esplanade, and yet they still can't figure out how to qualify the city under federal law for the money that we all hope you would get. The biggest and best way to do it is to frankly join with your neighbors so that we can make a very big ask. Tonight, as you know, the Missouri River flood basin is actually flooded. And if we go to Congress and try and request money for Pacifica, you are literally competing with all of those people in that flood basin for money, and of course, then at that point, you lose. The example of how to win is made by our neighbors to the north and to the south. This just happens to be one of the color brochures from Santa Clara Valley Water District. They annually ask for tens of millions and at times hundreds of million dollars from Congress, and they often get what they ask for. Ironically, Congresswoman Speer supports their proposals because there's a single creek that forms the border of San Mateo County and Santa Clara. That creek floods our district. And so we write letters of support for Santa Clara without ever being able to write a letter to support San Mateo County, because we don't have a flood control or sea level district. We ask respectfully that you support this, because it's in the long-term best interests of Pacifica to do so. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone who has any questions?
I have any questions. I just have a comment. So I want to thank Councilmember, Mayor Vardalas, for her hard work on this. I know we've been talking about it for, I guess, two years now, right, at least? And I know Council, Congresswoman Speer has also been working on it. So I wanted to thank Brian for being here tonight and Congresswoman Speer. I also want to thank Kevin Mullins for championing this. I think it's a no-brainer. It's a big ask for our budget, but I think it's going to be well worth it in the end, and that's my input.
So who moved this item? I move that we approve the item before us.
Adopt the resolution.
Adopt the resolution.
Adopt the resolution before us. I don't have it on here, on the screen. Okay. Proposed action, adopt the resolution. Next in order, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Pacifica, endorsing the San Mateo County Flood and Sea Level Rise Resiliency Agency Proposal and authorizing upon annual city budget adoption the expenditure of 40,000 annually for three fiscal years, 1920 through 2122, to support the agency startup.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Please vote. And that passes five to nothing. Thank you, Jim Porter and Brian Perkins, for being here. Thank you. Okay. The next...
Five now? Four.
We're going to move item five up and item four down. So the next item is the overview of the city's progress towards meeting the September 2019 deadline for Green Infrastructure Plan in accordance with the requirements of the municipal regional permit.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmember. My name is Raymond Don Guinness, Senior Civil Engineer for the City of Pacifica. The San Francisco Bay Regional Water Quality Control Board Municipal Regional Permit, or MRP, regulates pollutants in the stormwater runoff from municipal storm drain system. Provision C-3J of the MRP requires each jurisdiction to develop a green infrastructure plan that demonstrate how each permittee will gradually shift from traditional gray infrastructure, or pipe, to green infrastructure, or landscape-based system that captures street and infiltrate runoff. Tonight, we have Robin Lee from Schaaf &amp; Wheeler, the city's consultant, and Matt Fabry, the manager of the San Mateo County Water Pollution Prevention Program, to provide an update on how the city and county progressed towards meeting the 2019 deadline and submitting the City of Pacifica Green Infrastructure Plan.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. My name is Matt Fabry. I'm engineer on staff with the City-County Association of Governments, managing the countywide stormwater program. And I'm going to do the first few slides and then turn it over to Robin. So I think it was great that we could follow the previous presentation. That kind of set up a lot of the discussion for this. This is really talking about sort of the riverine piece that Director Porter mentioned on the past thing in terms of the types of flooding issues. And so this is really an outgrowth of the Clean Water Act, which was, you know, put in place in 1972, really regulating all point sources of pollution going into our water bodies. And then in 1990, EPA changed the regulations to designate that, they established the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, which is the permitting system that, for anyone that is discharging pollutants into a water body, has to get a permit. And then they added in stormwater and considered that one of these point discharges that used to be considered a non-point discharge, and they said that this is something that has to be regulated. And so at that point, they started issuing municipal stormwater permits to municipalities. And so we've been dealing with stormwater from the municipal standpoint in San Mateo County since the early '90s. In California, the federal regulations have been delegated to the state. So the state is the implementer of these regulations. And so the State Water Resources Control Board is the headquarters agency, and they have nine regional water boards that implement the regulations. So everyone in San Mateo County is regulated by the San Francisco Bay Regional Water Quality Control Board. And so we used to have countywide permits. San Mateo County used to be under one permit, but in 2009, they actually moved towards a regional permitting system. And so it regulates 76 municipalities in the Bay Area. Everyone in San Mateo, Santa Clara, Alameda and Contra Costa Counties, plus the cities of Fairfield, Vallejo, and Sassoon City. The permits are issued for five-year terms, so the second term of that permit was issued in 2015. And so you, as the City of Pacifica, are one of 22 permatees, which is the 20 cities and towns, the county. And then the County Flood Control District is also named as a permatee under that permit. So the permit is a big, huge, thick document. It regulates everything you could imagine that could be associated with stormwater. And as I was driving over here today in the rain, you can see the evidence of all the things that can be picked up when it rains and carried off into our storm drains and into our creeks and into the ocean and into the bay without any kind of treatment. So the permit regulates all the different aspects that municipalities have to deal with in terms of overseeing development, overseeing construction sites, doing business inspections. And then there's a few requirements in the permit that are what we, you know, think of as the real significant requirements. One is what we're here to talk to you about tonight, which is a requirement to develop a green infrastructure plan that shows how you're going to transform the way you manage stormwater. There's also significant requirements focused on pollutant reductions, especially pollutants impairing San Francisco Bay, which is a little bit less of an issue for folks in Pacifica, although you do have a portion of your city that drains to the bay. And then requirements to basically eliminate trash coming out of our storm drains by 2022. So this just gives you visual of the types of things we're talking about. You can see the sheen from vehicle-related pollutants. You've got trash and all of it flowing into that drain inlet there. And that all goes into our underground piping system and then out into our water bodies without any form of treatment in most cases. So back before we developed our urbanized areas, when it rained, a lot of the water would basically go into the ground. And you can see this, you know, when you stand on a roadway compared to the landscaped area next to it, you don't really get a lot of runoff from the landscaped areas, but everything that's falling on the road has nowhere to go, so it runs off. And so we used to have a lot of, water gets into the ground. We had a lot of water that would be taken up by the trees and the plants and then transpired back into the atmosphere. You'd have a lot of water that would flow through the ground and then recharge our creeks. But then we came in and paved over paradise and put in lots of parking lots and buildings. And so now we've got very limited amounts of water that can get into the ground because of all the impervious surfaces. We get limited evapotranspiration, because we've got much less vegetation in these areas than we used to. And so we get a lot more flow that's going directly off into these underground pipe systems and carrying all those pollutants that come in contact with it directly out to our water bodies. So the question is, can we get to something that's more of a balanced approach? We know we're never going to get back to pre-development conditions, but can we strategically intersperse specialized landscaped areas that allow water to be captured more closely to where it falls on the ground? Have things in our parking lots and on our roofs and in our streets that are different ways of managing stormwater that get to a point where we can do more to mimic sort of the natural conditions that happened prior to development? And so the regional permit does have a requirement that we develop these green infrastructure plans. Robin's going to talk about where Pacifica is in doing that, but their sort of overall goals of these plans is, one is, you have to show, as Raymond said, how are you going to transform from gray infrastructure, which is our traditional piped infrastructure, to something that's more green and sustainable that captures and manages runoff closer to where it lands, cleans it, gets more water into the ground, and does more to mimic the natural hydrologic cycle? The green infrastructure plans are supposed to serve as a reporting guide and implementation tool to show that we're actually reducing these pollutants that are of concern, especially on the bayside, although Pacifica is dealing with issues related to bacteria and pathogens related to Pacifica State Beach and San Pedro Creek. And then the plan is supposed to set targets for how much green infrastructure is going to be implemented over different timeframes and identify which actions need to be taken to address these water quality issues. So setting targets for how much is going to happen and where, and over what timeframes. And so with that, I'm going to pass it on to Robin to tell you what's going on with developing the plan.
Good evening. So once again, I'm Robin Lee with Schaaf &amp; Wheeler. My firm was hired to assist the city in developing their individual GI plan. So while CCAG has been hired to assist all the jurisdictions within San Mateo County with some of the larger efforts that can kind of be done on a regional scale, each city has to come up with their own individual plan, because like Matt said, Pacifica is unique in the sense that smaller portion drains to the bay, but then there's also the lot of drainage that goes over to the ocean side. So I will be compiling the information that has been developed by CCAG sort of for San Mateo County, which is this reasonable assurance analysis, or we call it the RAA model. That's a model that is submitted to the Regional Water Quality Control Board to assure them that these targets that they've set in the municipal permit will be met. And then CCAG is also kind of helping with some tracking and mapping tools. So these are things that each jurisdiction is going to have to do very similarly. And then also coming up with some green infrastructure design guides, standard details, so that contractors and property owners come in, and when the city says, "We'd like you to do green infrastructure," they have some sort of guidance and guidelines, so things are done in a similar fashion. Schaaf &amp; Wheeler is going to be looking at city codes and general plan updates and coming up with suggested language for updating these documents to sort of embrace green infrastructure. As Matt said, you know, historically, when we come in to develop a parcel, we try to get that water into an inlet as fast as possible to get it off the site. So now we're taking a step back, and we're trying to sort of change that mentality. So we need to give clear direction, and it does require sort of changing some language in codes and general updates, bicycle master plans, street plans. And we're going to have sort of a matrix in Pacifica's green infrastructure plan with suggested language updates. We're not saying these all have to be updated right now, but it's over the course of the year when these plans get updated, bringing in language that kind of allows for and encourages green infrastructure. So that plan, I will be bringing in draft format during the summer for council to read through. And then we are looking for the plan to be adopted and then submitted with the city's annual report this September. So one of the big, large regional efforts is the design guidelines. So the design guidelines right now is in draft format, and it's very picturesque, lots of pictures. It's pretty easy to follow. It gives guidelines for small developments down to the single-family residential home. So this is just showing different ways to drain your driveway. If anyone's familiar, we used to kind of just pipe our roof gutters straight into the storm drain system. And so these pictures up here kind of show roofs draining into landscaping prior to getting into the street. And then it also gives design guidelines for larger developments, so commercial or retail, similar things, more landscaping, draining roofs into what's sometimes called a rain garden or a bio-retention area to let it infiltrate prior to going directly into the storm drain system. And being more creative with your parking, so you can add more trees to capture some more drainage. Then there's also that assurance analysis model that's showing the Regional Water Quality Control Board that these pollutant load reductions are met. So there's three small sub-drainage areas within the city that do drain over to the bay. So that's what the regional model has kind of taken into account for. And in their model, they've come up with this, what we're calling a recipe, of how Pacifica meets these waste load reduction targets. And you can see in the City of Pacifica, the majority is that orange layer, which is private developers. So those are the developers who are coming in, and they become what's called a C-3 regulated project, which means if they're doing 10,000 square foot of impervious, then they are required to do water quality treatment. So for the majority of the cities throughout San Mateo County, there's this private development chunk that is basically going to meet some of the green infrastructure requirements. And then there's also a large regional project being done in South San Francisco on Colma Creek in Orange Memorial Park. That's one of those large $10 million projects that Jim talked about earlier. And that's actually going to capture some of the runoff from Pacifica that drains into the bay. And then there's a very small portion along the top, which is the city. So that would be, if the city is coming up with any other projects. I know that staff is already considering green infrastructure on some of the city-developed capital improvement projects and also resurfacing roads. That can also come from other items such as grants. I know the city has a Safe Routes to School. So there's also opportunities for grant funding for some of this green infrastructure. So a couple of examples of green infrastructure projects. The bottom right-hand corner of this slide is that large Orange Memorial Park, which is going to be an underground infiltration basin. It's going to capture runoff that's already in Colma Creek, divert it into a treatment system, use some of it for irrigation, and then the rest of it will go back into the creek after it's been cleaned. And then... And then the top left-hand corner is a sort of a street bulbout, so it's adding more landscaping right at an intersection. And this actually serves two purposes. Usually it also is included in a Safe Routes to School because it gets your pedestrians farther out into the streets so they're more visible, but they're still on the sidewalk. And it also provides treatment for the runoff that's in the street. So the next steps are basically, myself, I can attend the CCAG regional meetings and make comments on some of the products that are coming out. We have a big upcoming meeting on the modeling results and we're finalizing the design guidelines. And then I'll be working with city staff to make sure that those design guidelines work in Pacifica and we might make some modifications, ones that we prefer not to have. A classic example is pervious pavers are pretty and really good in some places, but if you have a vacuum sweeper, then they are not good. So we'll have to work through some of the specifics for the green infrastructure that is applicable and would work well in Pacifica and then ones that maybe work well in other places. And then, like I mentioned, we'll be bringing a draft report this summer for city council to look at, make comments, and then we're looking for adoption this September. Any questions?
Oh, Mike first and then Deirdre.
You mentioned that on some of the private developments that they would be, the water would be sent to a treatment system. Can you, what is a treatment system? How big is the development have to be before it triggers the treatment system? Because I'm just concerned that if you get somebody trying to build two-plex, three-plex, four-plex, how much does that add to the cost when they're adding housing or whatever?
So unfortunately, I can't answer in exact quantities for costs because the unit costs range all over the board. But the type of treatment system is a landscaped-based treatment. So this figure here shows basically it's draining the sidewalks and the parking lots into a depressed landscaping area. So most of the time, it can be sort of fit into amenity of the site in sort of that landscaping area. And those requirements are already in the city because, what, 2009 was when we first had the landscape-based treatments?
Yeah, these requirements for developments to do stormwater management have actually been in place since 2005. So we're coming up on, you know, 15 years of implementation throughout the county. So it's, these requirements are not changing with the green infrastructure plan in terms of private projects.
Okay, so you're really talking more about passive treatment than a machine doing something there?
Right. So prior to 2009, we had the sort of mechanical or media filters that are those boxes that go underground. But in 2009, the regional board really changed to this low-impact development. So they really want to see landscaping versus an underground treatment system.
Okay, so then, so we've already had those implemented in our planning guidelines. So then how has that affected like the floor area ratio of a parcel or whatever in the development of that parcel? Is this included as part of the floor area ratio of the building and structure or is it not?
That, I would have to be a building department question.
Ray's going to answer.
The sizing on these is, the rule of thumb is that it's about 4% of the impervious area that's draining to a facility. The facility needs to be about 4% of the impervious area draining to it. So typically on these development projects, there's usually a landscape minimum requirement. And so it's a matter of usually making the landscape do dual purpose instead of just being aesthetic. It's also positioned properly and set below, you know, the gutter grade so that you can capture runoff. So it's not, in general, it's not causing a lot of problems in terms of private implementation, but I'm sure Raymond can talk about Pacifica.
The trigger for the sparkler.
Yeah, the trigger is anything right now that adds or replaces over 10,000 square feet of impervious surface is subject to these requirements. It's generally not required for single-family home development unless it's part of a larger development process. There are some land uses where it drops down to 5,000 square feet. If it's a vehicle-related facility or a restaurant or things like that, they've dropped it down to 5,000 square feet.
Okay, now for projects that have like a zero setback for like commercial projects, are these passive, which are good and attractive, I mean, I've seen them around and stuff, and I know half of the Bay Library implemented them and it's very attractive with the whole Safe to School routes and all of that. But I'm just curious as to, for zero lotline projects such as a commercial project, is that, are these part of that also? Because there's generally not a yard or, and there's a higher floor area ratio?
There are certain exemptions. Within the permit, they're mostly focused on transit-oriented development projects that get some exemptions from having to do this treatment. I'm not sure if those exemptions would apply in Pacifica because I'm not sure if you have the transit-type facilities that would meet those requirements. Raymond could probably talk about that.
We don't.
We don't.
So I think, you know, generally, if you have a zero lotline development, you're still going to be subject to the requirements to do the treatment. There are provisions in the permit that do allow for alternative compliance though, so that if there was a project that absolutely had no way to do it onsite but was still mandated to do it, the city could work with them to do off-site treatment where they could, you know, retrofit a parking lot or a street or something like that instead of doing it onsite. So there are provisions to account for that, but it hasn't happened very often. We haven't found very many projects that aren't able to accommodate this within the existing footprint of the development.
Okay, thank you.
Deirdre Martin.
Okay, I'm going to ask some questions that may sound very ignorant. Do we, is this a county plan that's being implemented at a local level? Does Pacifica currently have a green infrastructure plan? No, okay. But we're being asked to implement now as a permity, correct?
Correct. So the city will have, all the cities will have green infrastructure plans. Components of them will be very similar, like the RAA. The modeling will all come from the same sort of source, which is CCAG, but each city has a different numeric value. And there'll be, the design guide is for San Mateo County, so that will all be very similar. But then the specifics, updates to codes and general plans and what green infrastructure-focused Pacifica wants will be a little bit different for each jurisdiction.
Okay. And so, again, pardon my ignorance, Robin, do you work for CCAG or do you, are you going to work, you work for Schaff and Wheeler?
Schaff and Wheeler, correct.
But does CCAG pay you? We don't, we don't pay for you, right?
I'm on an on-call. So I have an on-call with the City of Pacifica.
Okay, so we will pay for you to work on our GI plan?
That's correct.
Okay. So, and we have no choice in this, right?
You have no choice in terms of, you have to develop the plan?
Yes.
CCAG, I should have mentioned, you know, the kind of my stormwater program, our role is to support all of our member agencies, which have the 20 cities in the county. And so we've tried to do as much as we can to make developing a GI plan as easy as possible. And that's why a lot of these things that Robin is talking about, CCAG is developed to give you the tools that you need, but there is a certain amount of local specificity that has to go into each plan. And the permit does say that every permity has to have their own GI plan. So that's where somebody like Robin can come in and take the tools that CCAG is providing. You know, we provided model language on how you could update your planning documents to incorporate all this. She'll take it and actually look at your planning documents and give you the recommendations on what language should go where in your different planning documents and things like that. So that's.
Yeah, okay. No, I didn't mean it to sound rude, but I just, for the public's knowledge, some things we are required to do.
That question has been asked.
Right, yes.
This is a City of Pacifica obligation.
Correct, okay. So then, we did apply for a green, as part of the Safe Routes to School last year grant for a couple of our bus stops where the kids wait, and we didn't get it, but we did.
One.
Wow. For green infrastructures, not the one on Crespey?
Cabrillo.
Cabrillo?
Yeah.
Oh, right, okay. Great. The one in the picture is right down, right around the corner here. That's great. So, okay, we did get that. Congratulations to us. And, all right, so we applied for a green, to, okay, I like the tagline here. It's working together to build a green infrastructure plan that is implementable and funded. So CCAG helps us by offering us grants and things like that, right? And generally, we have to provide a match, some percent of a match on those things. But Robin, you help us identify those things or just?
So one of the other efforts that CCAG has done is they've looked, they've hired another consultant, SCI, who is a financial consultant. And so they have provided sort of a memo that will be attached to the City of Pacifica's green infrastructure plan that talks about different options for funding green infrastructure. But I think, like Matt said, there's a very small portion of Pacifica that drains to the bay, so the actual required amount of green infrastructure necessary under the permit is very small for Pacifica. It's very, very large for other jurisdictions like South San Francisco that have all of the industrial historical loads. Pacifica's a much smaller amount.
And it doesn't, and it's not associated with where these drain, they don't, our projects don't necessarily have to be the ones that are draining out to the bay, right? There can be on the coast side too.
That's our understanding, that's correct. It's sort of the, a goal is to reduce the amount of imperviousness and capture runoff. And so it will be those quantities that are reported.
So I'm curious, we're working on our general plan, we're working on our local coastal plan, we're working on our bike and pedestrian plan, so sort of perfect timing.
Yep.
I'm curious if something like this would apply to something like a switchback which has an impermeable surface. Impermeables, is that correct?
Impermeable, meaning not draining?
Yeah, exactly. But has areas where it could potentially drain off into, so something to think about, Ray. You know where I'm talking about. And then the other thing, I wanted to switch, could you switch to the last, the second to last slide? You were talking about next steps. And I was just curious a little bit about some of your next steps. You had mentioned products. Along what lines were you talking? It's your job to stay and keep people oppressed of products and the modeling, is that?
I think I meant the products that are coming out of the CCAG, the regional effort. So making sure that we have the updated, that graphic from the RAA modeling and they're going to provide the language that I need to slip into Pacifica's plan that explains how the model was done and then what Pacifica's committing to.
Okay. And then, okay, you answered all my questions. Thank you. Thanks.
Anybody else? Okay. Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Robin.
Yeah, thank you.
For being here. Thank you, Ray.
Excited.
Okay. Our next item is the, is now number five, which was formerly four, the Report on the Multi-Unit Housing Smoking Ordinances.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members and staff. My name is Dan Stile. I'm your Chief of Police. And tonight I bring to you a report regarding multi-unit, multi-housing, multi-unit housing smoking ordinances. So the history of what brings us here tonight is back on July 26 of 2018, the San Mateo County Civil Grand Jury released a report that was entitled Smoke-Free Multi-Unit Housing: No If, Ands, or Buts. On October 8 of 2018, staff presented to this council a report regarding the response to the San Mateo County Civil Grand Jury recommendations, agreeing to hold a public meeting on this issue by March 31 of 2019. In that San Mateo County Civil Grand Jury report, the only recommendation that was pertinent to Pacifica, as we currently do not have a multi-unit housing smoking ordinance, was that we would hold a public hearing to evaluate issues and hear residents' views on adopting smoking restrictions in this jurisdiction. There were several jurisdictions that did, however, have smoking ordinances in place in some form already. For those that had already adopted ordinances, the grand jury recommended improving tracking of smoking violations and increasing residents' awareness of rights and obligations related to those ordinances. Now, the contents of the grand jury report included a focus on health-related risks of secondhand smoke. It also pointed to secondhand cannabis smoke as being just as toxic as tobacco smoke, including the long-term effects of that type of smoke. It dealt and spoke to issues related to secondhand smoke and multi-unit dwellings. As we take a look at this, I wanted to take you through a few laws regarding, in place in the state of California as well as in the City of Pacifica. First of all, currently, in the state of California, smoking is banned in select buildings, including government buildings, as well as within 20 feet of the main exits, entrances, and operable windows of a government building. You cannot smoke in vehicles with persons of under 18 years old or present on public transportation, all indoor workplaces, which captures your bars and your restaurants. It is also illegal to smoke cannabis in a public place or anywhere where tobacco is prohibited. In the City of Pacifica, no smoking of tobacco products on beaches or on the municipal pier. And our ordinance also says there's no smoking inside a tobacco retailer and all indoor areas within 20 feet of any door, window, or other opening into the premises. And as I stated earlier, currently, Pacifica does not have an ordinance that addresses Currently in Pacifica, our tabulation shows that we have 142 multi-unit residential dwellings. Now, the large, majority of those dwellings are small with only a few units, commonly owned by one owner with several units that are rented out. Of the complexes in Pacifica, the apartment complexes, the larger ones, we selected 20 of the larger ones in Pacifica and made contact and did some research on their smoking policies. State law allows the owner of the building to either prohibit or allow smoking on the premises. 19 of the 20 already prohibit smoking. Well, taking a look at the other jurisdictions, this data was compiled. It may be a little different than the data that you'll find in the Civil Grand Jury report as that was compiled last year. As of the final completion of this staff report, this is the data that we were able to come up with as accurate. So what I would like to draw your attention to, first of all, is at the bottom line in the yellow. This line here is the recommendation of the San Mateo County Civil Grand Jury in this matter. The Civil Grand Jury is recommending multi-unit smoking ordinances. It is also recommending that, when enacting those ordinances, that medical cannabis not be exempt from those ordinances. They are also recommending the placement of the ordinance of retaliation clause that would basically prohibit someone from retaliating on another for complaining about smoking in a multi-unit residence. Of the jurisdictions that we look at, 11 now have some sort of multi-unit smoking prohibition already in place. Six of them do not, but of those six, two of them are currently under consideration by their cities. Seven do not have an exemption for medical cannabis of the 11 that have multi-unit smoking prohibitions already in place. And six of the 11 that have the smoking prohibitions have anti-retaliation ordinances already in place. Now, we're looking at the grand jury report and looking at how some of these ordinances in our county have come to pass. The spirit of the multi-unit housing smoking ordinance is to protect those, the health of those who choose not to smoke. Multi-unit residents, as you know, often share common walls with each other, windows and doors, or in close proximity to one another, subjecting non-smokers to secondhand smoke. Currently, there is no constitutional guarantee to smoking. There is no right to smoke established in either ordinances or state laws or federal laws or case laws. So some of the considerations we should bring to your attention tonight, multi-unit smoking ordinances are difficult to enforce. They're commonly municipal codes. They're misdemeanors, which means for an officer to take action on them, take enforcement action on them, i.e. write a citation for criminal prosecution. criminal prosecution, the officer must witness the violation take place, or have evidence that the violation did take place, along with some corroborating evidence of who committed the violation, such as the admission of, of the perpetrator. However, if we do, if, if, if a jurisdiction does have an ordinance in place, and they wish prosecution, one of the other things that must be considered is, these prosecutions are not done by district attorneys. The San Mateo County District Attorney does not prosecute municipal codes. The municipal codes are prosecuted by the city attorney. So what that equates to is enforcing that type of law, writing those type of citations, and the city attorney prosecuting those for us comes with legal costs that should be considered. The other thing that should be considered when thinking about this issue is, for those jurisdictions that, that are putting, thinking about putting these in place, what is the expectation of the community regarding the enforcement of these violations as they're reported? As I've stated earlier, and it also states in the grand jury report, law enforcement identifies that something like this is very, very difficult to enforce. However, one local jurisdiction in San Mateo County calls that out on their website, and in the information they put out to the public, and they say this is difficult to enforce. However, we do have an ordinance in place, and we use it more of, for an educational tool. A reason to go out and to contact people for this type of violation, and educate them about the ordinance, and try to gain compliance, and they see that as a benefit. And according to our city attorney's office, in Pacifica, to bring a smoking ordinance to adoption would run anywhere between $6,000 to $8,000 likely in legal costs. So in February 2019, the American Lung Association distributed a report, and in that report, it discussed some of the back-and-forth arguments between residents of multi-unit housing complexes regarding smoking ordinances. There's a couple scenarios I'll give you that I think the Lung Association did a really good job of, of calling out, and these are the type of arguments, you know, that, that we would likely hear. The first scenario involves a low-income individual, we'll say in this case, it's, it's a smoker, that needs to live in a certain multi-unit complex in their area that provides low-income housing. Unfortunately, this low-income, multi-unit residential area has a smoking prohibition because of an ordinance. The individual argues that they're being discriminated against by a smoking ban, as they are prevented from living, from living in affordable housing because they smoke. The opposing argument from a low-income, a non-smoker suggests that if the multi-unit apartment complex allows smoking, they are forced to endure secondhand smoke because they cannot afford a higher-rent complex to live in elsewhere. And a second scenario, one that, that I've heard several people talk to me about, and that is a, for example, a condominium complex. Now, your condominium complexes oftentimes may have an association, but they're more often than not individually owned. So you have somebody that has paid $700,000 for their, their unit, and now they're pushing back as they're saying, I paid $700,000 for my unit, who's going to tell me that I can't smoke in my own, own unit? However, on the contrary, on the other side of that coin, you have the person next door who has paid the same amount of money for their unit, and they're a non-smoker, and now they're being forced to endure the effects of secondhand smoke. So you have these, these competing sides in this issue. Pacifica Police Department and Code Enforcement staff discussed this issue, and we are only aware of one complaint in recent times of secondhand smoke involving a multi-unit housing complex. I reached out and had contact with the San Mateo County Health Tobacco Prevention Program, and they reported since 2012, they have had eight smoking complaints regarding multi-unit housing dwellings and secondhand smoke since 2012. Prior to completing this staff report for, for council, staff did do some outreach, realizing that this could be a topic that people were interested in. We sent letters to 142 multi-unit housing owners or associations that, that cover the complexes. Notifications were made to San Mateo County Tobacco Prevention Partnership and Tobacco Education Coalition, as well as the Youth Leadership Institute, and we also notified the California Apartment Association Tri-County Division, which to my understanding, covers Pacifica, and made them aware of what we were going to be bringing to the council for discussion tonight. So as I complete my presentation this evening, remind you that, that this presentation and the, and the opportunity for public comment and discussion amongst council members fulfills our requirement and our obligation, what we promised that we would do for the San Mateo County Civil Grand Jury. Of course, I'm open to questions from council members. At this point, concluding the presentation with the reminder that staff has not made any recommendations in this report, and the only thing that staff is asking for at this point is that this report be accepted by council.
Is anyone on council? Okay, Sue Beth Meyer?
I'm just curious as to whether there was a response to any of the 142 letters that you sent.
Response back to me? I spoke to one person who called. One person. It was a person I spoke to actually this morning who had heard from the association, from the condominium complex she lived in, and wanted to know how we could, if the city was going to be adopting this tonight, and she wanted to speak, and I explained to her the process and that, because she had concerns about being told she couldn't smoke.
Thank you.
Mary?
So I have a question about, so you stated that the legal cost of carrying through the adoption of a multi-unit smoking ordinance is estimated to be approximately $6,000 to $8,000, correct? Maybe this is a question for Michelle, perhaps. Is it possible to lower those costs by partnering with, with agencies that have already created these ordinances?
That is taking that into consideration. So I have other ordinances that we've used in other communities, but the issue is we need to tailor it specifically to Pacifica.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other counsel, we have several cards from the public. Jay Wood, followed by Sandra Varga and Julian Rodriguez.
I'm Jay Wood, recent person moving to Pacifica about a year and a half ago, and came to find out that in the condominium complex I'm, I live at, that they don't regulate the smoking, and the secondhand smoke is, shouldn't be subject to somebody else's addiction like that, it's, it's harmful to us. My wife is very allergic to smoke, we have to close our windows on a regular basis, daily, most of the time, unless the wind just happens to be going in the opposite direction, and, you know, the, the argument about paying the $700,000 is, certainly has two sides to it, but when the public in general has spoken on the issue of smoking, I don't see why that has to filter here, but not filter here. San Mateo has strict ordinances about it in multi-unit housings, and somehow they're not adopted in different areas, and I don't, I don't understand why the county laws wouldn't have jurisdictions, so I'd like a little explanation about that, and what we can do to kind of get in the 21st century about being healthy for the whole environment. We're talking about a green initiative, what about our lungs? So, all right, thanks.
Thank you. Sandra Varga, Julian Rodriguez, and then Smitha. Not seeing Sandra. Okay, Julian Rodriguez, Smitha, then Alex.
Can you hear me? Hello, my name is Julian Rodriguez, and I'm a Pacifica resident, as well as a student of South San Francisco High School, and I'm here today to thank you for exploring the issue of secondhand smoke, and here to encourage the council to adopt a smoke-free multi-unit housing policy, or ordinance, sorry, in Pacifica. Now, as I mentioned prior, I'm a resident of Pacifica, La Bae Westview, and also I have a personal experience with smoking, I am asthmatic. When I was young, I was in the garage, and I had a really traumatic experience with secondhand smoke, because I remember he was smoking about like two feet away from me, and that's left a really negative effect on my life, and hence why I'm here today to encourage adopting a smoke-free multi-unit housing policy in our community. From what we currently know, there are, these such policies are in places like Belmont, Brisbane, Burlingame, Daly City, Foster City, San Bruno, San Mateo, South City, and as well as unincorporated areas, which takes over about half of all multi-unit housings, housing units in the county. I think Pacifica should join the rest of the smoke-free cities across the county, in an effort to help the general public and those that live in multi-unit housing to have the ability to live in smoke-free zones and be able to breathe clean air. Thank you.
Thank you. Smitha, then Alex, and Emilio.
Good evening, honorable city council members. My name is Smitha Gundo Vajala, and I'm here with the Youth Leadership Institute. I want to uplift the feedback from members of the community who have been impacted by secondhand smoke. Many of the young people here tonight will talk about the health impacts of secondhand smoke, how it can be concentrated in apartments, and how the most vulnerable members of our community, young people and the elderly, often have the least choice and agency in moving out of these housing situations. The grand jury report on smoke-free multi-unit housing recommends that all cities in the county evaluate the issue. I hope you see tonight and in the coming months that Pacifica residents are seriously impacted by secondhand smoke in their apartments, and that there is need and interest in the community to further look into adopting a smoke-free multi-unit housing ordinance. While I works with the Tobacco Prevention Program of San Mateo County, which operates a hotline for secondhand smoke complaints, unfortunately, many of the Pacifica residents that have reached out to us could not be here tonight, but I've spoken with them, and they hope that this issue will continue to be talked about at future city council meetings. A few of them will also be reaching out to you to share their experiences with secondhand smoke, or to write a letter. I heard Chief Stidle mention that 19 of 20 multi-unit housing complexes have policies banning smoking. One piece of feedback we received from a resident was that landlords are loath to ban smoking in practice, and that they would benefit from having a smoke-free multi-unit housing policy to cite or invoke when these issues arise, as a preventative measure. I want to offer the support of the Tobacco Education Coalition in working with the council and staff to explore what a smoke-free multi-unit housing ordinance would mean for Pacifica. The Tobacco Education Coalition has model ordinances available, we are providing a couple of these copies to staff. We're also available to support enforcement after the policy's adoption, fielding complaints and concerns through the TPP hotline that I mentioned earlier. As the grand jury report recommends hearing from residents to understand their experiences, we recommend opening a comment period for community feedback, understanding that many affected residents cannot be here tonight, as well as looking at some of the model ordinances that we have provided. Hopefully, this will begin to give you an understanding of what is needed for your community in Pacifica, and hopefully also help start a conversation with the tobacco education about how we can be of help as you navigate this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Alex, Emilio, and then Leilani.
Hello, my name is Alexandra, and I'm a student at the South San Francisco High School. I would like to encourage you to adopt a smoke-free multi-unit housing policy. From what we know, only a handful of cities in San Mateo County have not passed a smoke-free multi-unit housing policy, Pacifica being one of them. About 22.5% of the population of Pacifica is youth, and youth are especially vulnerable to secondhand smoke. Speaking as someone that has lived in an apartment, I have myself been affected by secondhand smoke. I am a soccer player, and being in an environment that threatens my overall health has impacted my ability to perform. I believe youth in Pacifica deserve the opportunity to live a healthy and active life. That's why I think the smoke-free multi-unit housing policy should be passed. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Emilio, Leilani, and then Rebecca.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Emilio. Oh, sorry. I'd like for you all to consider adopting a smoke-free multi-unit housing policy. I feel that it is important to consider not only the health of smokers themselves, but also for the people being affected in their vicinity as well. Of the over 480,000 deaths per year from tobacco-related diseases in the US, about 41,000 deaths are caused by secondhand smoke, especially for children and elderly, which are more susceptible to the smoke itself. 41.1% of Pacifica's population are children and older adults. These two populations historically have less of a say in where they live, and often are unable to move anywhere else. I would really appreciate for you all to consider this policy for the health of, health of vulnerable residents and the Pacifica community. Thank you.
Thank you. Leilani, Rebecca, then Edith.
My name is Leilani, and I'm a junior at South San Francisco High School. I'm here today to stress the importance of implementing a smoke-free multi-unit housing policy. Roughly 37% of the people in my school district live in apartments. Here in Pacifica, there are over 4,000 apartment units, meaning that thousands of residents are impacted by this issue. Young people are especially exposed to secondhand smoke, which increases the likelihood of developing respiratory-related health issues. In fact, there are 150,000 to 300,000 respiratory infections in children every year. In addition to secondhand smoke, young people like myself are exposed to thirdhand smoke, which consists of particles and chemicals of tobacco absorbed in the walls or flooring. The second and thirdhand smoke affects residents of housing complexes, with thirdhand smoke lasting long after smokers leave. That is why I ask that you consider passing an ordinance to prohibit smoking in multi-unit housing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Rebecca, followed by Edith, and then Therese.
Hey there, my name is Rebecca. I'm a Pacifica resident, I've been here for six years. Not born and raised, I'm from Wisconsin, so I'm very familiar with smokers. My parents are smokers, grandparents are smokers, the whole family smoked, and as a result, I have asthma. So I've just become sensitive to it over the course of the years, but I live here primarily because I like the fresh air. I like it for a lot of reasons, living here in Pacifica. I just found out about this meeting like a few hours ago, so I was, got straight in my car, but I'm right here in Sher Park. But I had lived over in the Lands End, I think currently Ocean Air Apartments, and I think I wanted to just bring a current-day scenario of what actually happens. I mean, I could sit here and talk about what secondhand smoke does all day, but, you know, I, I work in Redwood City, I do the commute because I pay a premium to live here. I'm certainly not going to talk about the housing premium, because we can talk about that for days as well, but, but I've chosen to live here because I like the fresh air, and I, and, and I lived in the same apartment for three and a half years before I was priced out, that's another discussion. But I did have, at the time, they do have a rule that you are not allowed to smoke on their property, and they make you fill out a form. When you're filling out your lease agreement, do you smoke, yes or no, and you're supposed to select yes or no. And you can be a smoker, but then you sign something extra that just says you promise you won't smoke on the premises, which is fine. And over the course of the time that I had lived there, for the most part, people were pretty decent about it. People wouldn't smoke on their balconies, or they wouldn't smoke on the property. However, what ended up happening was, and my unit was right on Palmetto, so it's probably one of the closest buildings to Palmetto, I would venture to guess it's probably 15 feet from my front door, would be the sidewalk and then Palmetto, and so, right where all the RVs park and all of that. And what happens is, are that the people that do smoke, that said no, that they don't smoke, would just stand right outside on the, on the sidewalk, right in front of my unit, and smoke there. And unfortunately, the complex said they could do nothing about that. And so here I'm signing something, I'm paying an extra premium to live in this community, only so that essentially, within 10 feet of my door, there's no rules that says that someone can't smoke there. I have a dog, it's not a right to have a dog, just as much as it's not a right to be able to smoke cigarettes, it's just a privilege in my opinion. So in that, from that perspective, I feel that there should be something done, prevent that kind of behavior from happening. I realize it's hard to enforce, but at the same time, I'm paying a ton of money to live here, and it just would be the greater good for this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Edith, followed by Therese, and then Lisa.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council, my name is Edith Kabuslay, I am with the San Mateo County Health Department. I come this evening to share some data with you. Only 6.6% of San Mateo County adults smoke, and over 80% of Californians who were surveyed report wanting to be in a smoke-free living environment. So the message is, the vast majority of people do not smoke, and the vast majority of people want to live in smoke-free housing. of people want to live in smoke-free housing arrangements. As far as enforcement is concerned, something that the Health Department is offering is an education component. When a complaint comes into our Tobacco Prevention Program, we speak with the complainant and talk about the steps that we would like to see taken when a complaint is launched. We, we initially ask the complainant whether they've spoken with the neighbor who might be smoking, and if they haven't, find out about their comfort level speaking to that neighbor. If they're not comfortable, we may assist them in being connected to the property management. And if that doesn't work, is when we send a letter to both the, the person that they had complained about, as well as the property management. In general, the city manager and the mayor of the city also are copied with that communication. If further complaints come in, that's when we pass it on to the enforcement agency, generally code enforcement or the police department in a city. In most jurisdictions, that first complaint and the communication with the person they complain about results in compliance to the ordinance. Belmont being the first city in the, in the country to have this ordinance in place, reported that for the most part, there is compliance to the ordinance. We also point out that although you might have nineteen out of twenty multi-unit housing facilities already with a voluntary smoke-free policy, what happens with voluntary policies is that as soon as a new owner or a new manager comes in, that policy might go out the window. A city that, that actually has this ordinance would mean that regardless of who owns those facilities, they would have to be smoke-free. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Therese, then Lisa.
I hadn't planned on talking on this subject, but I just read a recent article about that it, secondhand smoke affects your kidneys, and I believe I still have that article at home. But I do think, you know, if you can smoke at the beach where the air is clear and it's salt air, then we surely should enforce it in apartments, and especially people that are paying high rent. Now, I have a friend that's in a hospital right now with a viral infection in her lung, and she's still smoking. I have a son that's got a spot on his lung, and he's still smoking. I wish that the government or somebody could, knowing that it causes lung cancer and everything else, that they could do away with cigarettes altogether. And what about the e-cigarettes now, that are up on, you know, with the teenage kids, high school kids? And, and the cannabis, you know, I mean, we passed laws, maybe it'll bring in a few dollars for revenue or whatever, but I mean, at what cost, you know? So, I think you should pass the ordinance, you know, I mean, and if you're having problems with the $6,000, San Mateo County, who's got an overflow of money, and you need to go to some of those county supervisors' meetings to find out. They have 25 attorneys there, and the school districts use them from time to time, so why can't we use them? You can use them in conjunction with your job.
Thank you, Lisa. And Lisa's the last card I have.
Yes, hi, my name is Lisa, and I'm just here to say that I really hope you pass the smoking ordinance. I live in a triplex, and I walk, when I walk into my front, the front area, there's at least five, and when their friends are over, at least 20 people smoking, I have to walk through this. By the time I get to my house, I'm coughing, I now have asthma, and I just, for the children, for everybody's concern, I just really hope you pass this initiative. Thank you.
Thank you. So, seeing no one else, I'll bring it back to council. This is an information-only item tonight, so we will not be passing an ordinance tonight. It's informational only. Deirdre.
Thanks for, everyone for showing up tonight. We received a report on this last year, and last year, I suggested that we consider an ordinance to ban smoking in multi-unit housing, and I stand by that recommendation, and I hope we can get some other council members to agree that we should give some direction this evening, in addition to receiving this report. Thanks, Chief, and that's it.
Mary Beer.
Yeah, I want to thank everybody for, for showing up here tonight and, and sharing with us, you know, the work that, that Tobacco Education Coalition and, and partners across the county have done have decreased tobacco use over the years, and then, so we have to keep that up, and, and I, I trust the work of the Tobacco Education Coalition. And so, I, I would like to request additional information from staff to come back to council with a smoke-free multi-unit ordinance that promotes the education component rather than aggressive prosecution, I can't even say that word, prosecutorial stance.
Thank you. Mike.
Unless I missed it, all I saw in the report was multi-unit. Are we talking duplexes, or just, and you've referenced large compartment complexes, but are we down to two units or less?
I'll defer to the city attorney in this portion, but I believe that we, we could define what the multi-unit meant. It would usually be three or more, I imagine.
Correct, yeah, and in my experience, it does not impact duplexes, usually does not cover duplexes. Usually, multi-unit is intended to be four or more units.
So, commercial building, commercial loan breakdown, okay. So, four units, yes. Yeah, I have no problem if you bring this back for an ord, a vote.
Sue Beckmeyer.
I agree, it should be brought back, but one of the things I'm concerned about is what I heard from two people who spoke tonight about, there's already a policy for no smoking inside the buildings and on the property, so right outside the property, on the sidewalk, the smoke knows no bounds. So, it's still affecting the people even though it's not happening in the units or on the property. So, I don't know how that can be addressed. I know there is something about, with government buildings, you can't smoke within 20 feet of the building. I don't know if there's any kind of way to address that within an ordinance around so many feet from a building, a structure, habitable structure, or whatever. It's just something that occurred to me when someone who spoke said, that the apartment manager said there's nothing they can do about it because the people are on a public sidewalk when they're smoking at that point. So, I think that would be something that we'd have to at least give consideration to.
Iconia.
I was just going to say, if you come back with an ordinance, I would be open to the recommendations of the grand jury, as those are, as the parameters.
Thank you, that was going to be my next question.
I'm happy to hear that only 6.6% of people smoke cigarettes, because I can't believe that anyone smokes cigarettes in these days, when they've had so much education on cigarettes. I think my only concern is that I have difficulty in owner-occupied units versus rental units, and I can, I totally can see both sides. If I were a smoker and I bought my unit, I may want to smoke in there, but it does affect everybody else. So, I don't think you can say that it doesn't affect non-owner-occupied units, because it does affect everybody else. And I would be also interested in bringing this ordinance back. Deirdre.
Yeah, and I just wanted, for the public's knowledge, we did hear from a local mom-and-pop landlord that supported coming back with an ordinance as well. And then I also would just suggest that, especially since we heard from someone who lives in a triplex tonight, that we would at least try to give consideration to three or more units. I don't know if that's possible, city attorney, but, but it's, it's an issue, so. And, you know, just for, for informational purposes, we own a condo in a, in a, in a association up in San Rafael, and it's, it's non-smoking, and you can't smoke within 25 feet of that, that complex at all. So, you can't smoke on your back porch, you, you've got to be at least 25 feet, and I'm sure maybe they were 25 feet away from your, your door, and that's an unfortunate situation. Maybe, sir, you're also going to have that same problem if somebody's out on the sidewalk. But it sounds like we've got a consensus on coming back to council with, with a, an ordinance. Thanks, Chief.
And I'm sorry it's not enforceable. I think that's, it's, I'm sorry it's not enforceable, I think that's going to be our biggest issue is enforcement.
Well, well, you know, a little more on that, you know, the purpose of bringing that point up is so we have realistic expectations. You know, is there, is there an opportunity for us to make a difference if this is the path of the council and the community decides to take? You know, of course there is. As long as we don't have the expectation that every time somebody makes a complaint, somebody's getting a citation, which unfortunately happens sometimes. But as you've heard tonight, and what we've read in the grand jury report, there are many avenues available for us to, such as the, the Health Department, the Tobacco Prevention Coalition, these folks, to help us educate. There will be, there will definitely need to be some form of public outreach to, you know, make everybody aware, one, and, and to, again, use our partners in the county to help us reach out to those that perhaps aren't.
And what a lot of communities are doing is providing in their ordinances rights to tenants to enforce the ordinance on their own. So, we, we will look at that as well.
Thank you. Mike, then Mary.
Having been on the fireworks task force, this just sounds a lot like that. You know, we, we prohibit the illegal fireworks, but the police can't do anything about it unless they actually witness it. You then have letters to the editor and postings on next door, why aren't the police doing something about this? And I, and, you know, I support the ordinance, it's just, it sounds like we've been down this road before, and it just is kind of frustrating, that's all.
In response to that, I have a, have a little more confidence in this than the fireworks. The fireworks is kind of a one, you know, well, the majority of it's once a year, they fire off the illegal fireworks, they run and hide from the police. When you're talking about enforcing something here, and you have the, the Health Department on your side, and the landlords on your side, and people who continue to violate this ordinance, you know, may be subject to action by their landlords. You know, if you had a choice between keeping where you live or, or smoking, perhaps I think it might be a little more easier to get compliance than on the Fourth of July.
Mary.
Yeah, I just wanted to emphasize the partnership with the, with the health system. It's really important that we're able to work along, side by side with them. So, thank you for being here tonight.
Who wants to make a motion?
We don't, it's just information only, no motion needed.
Oh, you want to accept it, though? No. Do we have to make a motion to ask you to? We have direction. Great, okay.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to move on to item number six, the Safe Sidewalk Vending Act, and if we can have a staff report.
Mayor Fardalos, members of the Pacifica City Council, my name's Lorenzo Hines, I'm the Assistant City Manager. Tonight, we're going to present the ordinance that we're proposing to adopt to adhere to the new state law for Safe Sidewalk Vending Act. And so, our recommended action is to introduce, waive, the first reading, and read by title only, the ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Pacifica Enacting a Sidewalk Vending Program under Title IV, Chapter 18 of the Pacifica Municipal Code, and Amending Title I, Chapter VI, and Title IV, Chapter VII, Chapter IX, and Chapter X of the Pacifica Municipal Code." And so, I put together a PowerPoint to somewhat summarize some of the issues, the little background about this particular act. This PowerPoint essentially can be traced to the ordinance itself and to the staff report, so it's just, just a quick summary. So, on September 17th, 2018, former Governor Jerry Brown signed Senate Bill 946, and the law went into effect January 1st, 2019. And Senate Bill 946 limits the oversight that cities have over sidewalk vendors, including stationary and roaming vendors who may be vending food or merchandise. Sidewalk vendors are individuals who sell food and merchandise from a variety of, sort of, vehicles, push carts, stands, display, pedal-driven cart, wagons, showcase, racks, and any other non-motorized conveyance. There are two types of sidewalk vendors, there's roaming and stationary. The Vending Act itself does two things. It restricts certain actions of the city, of the cities, and it also provides flexibility to the cities as well. But the main, sort of the main drivers of the act is that it restricts the city's ability to require sidewalk vendors to operate within specific parts of the right-of-way, prohibit the sidewalk vendor from selling food or merchandise in a park owned and operated by the city. It prohibits the city from requiring a sidewalk vendor to obtain the consent or approval of any non-governmental entity. It restricts sidewalk vendors to, it restricts the city from limiting sidewalk vendors to designated areas or neighborhoods, restricts the city's ability to control the overall number of sidewalk vendors, and this is the biggest one, right here. It restricts the city's ability to undertake criminal enforcement of any sort against sidewalk vendors. One of the reasons that this bill came about is because we had apparently certain cities who were proceeding criminally against folks who were vending on sidewalks. And so, this bill was created and this law was enacted to keep that, that particular action from occurring, among other things. So, even though there are restrictions that this law imposes on the city, SB 946 does give us the flexibility to sort of customize the application of this law to fit the City of Pacifica and our culture and climate. And so, the things that we can control, again, this is a summary, we'll get into the details a little later, but the vendor operation, hours of operation, sanitary condition requirements, ADA compliance, we can prohibit sidewalk vendors in and around farmers' markets and swap meets, we can require vendors to obtain city and other agency permits and licenses, we can limit sidewalk vendor presence at special events, we can limit sort of the vending time, place, and the number and manner at city parks and beaches. We're going to prohibit, prohibit stationary vendors in residential zones, limit vendor operations near public transit, ADA ramps, fire hydrants, and driveways. And also, we're going to, we have the ability to enact regulations at parks and, and other facilities that are related to health and safety and welfare concerns, necessary to protect the public's use and enjoyment of natural resources, also necessary to prevent undue concentration of commercial activities that interfere with the scenic and natural character of the park. So, I have some folks to thank who worked with me in putting these regulations together, primarily the City Attorney's Office, Director Perez from Parks, Beaches, and Recreation, Chief Stidle and Captain Spanheimer from the Pacifica Police Department, San Baptiste from the Public Works Department, Tina Wermeyer from Planning, and Thomas Myers from the Economic Development Office. Those are our internal policy consultants. External consultants are the community policy consultants, is, we met with Chris Porter from Recology of the Coast, Lynn Adams from the Pacific Beach Coalition, I talked with Aaron- Lynn Adams from the Pacific Beach Coalition, talked with Aaron Tormay from the Pacifica Farmers Market. I spoke with Greg Cochran from Parks, Beaches, and Recreation Committee. And I also spoke in front of the entire Chamber of Commerce last week. And so was able to get input from all of those entities. So our policy objectives in creating the regulations that we're going to propose to you. So the overall, the overall policy objective is if we wanted to comply with state law regarding the interaction between the city and sidewalk vendors, and we, you know, essentially want to make sure that we're abiding by the law. And the second thing we wanted to do was ensure that the customer experience, recreational opportunities, and natural resources in our parks, piers, beaches, and recreation areas are minimally affected by vendor activity. We are looking to prohibit vendors from operating on any sand surfaces or beaches in our beaches and parks. We want to limit vendor operations to paved areas or decomposed granite pedestrian pathways. Also, we want to limit the distance between vendors. The third policy objectives is we want to make sure that all the sidewalk vendors adhere to health, safety, regulatory, cart size, hours of operation, and ADA compliance. We want to reduce the possibility that vendor activity will disturb residents in residential neighborhoods. We want to make sure that the placement and operating parameters of stationary and roaming carts and that we make sure that they have minimal effect on our residents. The next policy objective is that we want to limit vendor activity near public transit, ADA ramps, fire hydrants, and driveways. We want to regulate the activity, vendor activity around Pacifica special events. We have prescribed remedies for non-compliance built into this ordinance. And we want to modify current law to clarify that the enforcement of sidewalk vending on the pier shall be administrative citations and not criminal. And that also brings us in line with state law. So the next few slides are going to be rather detailed. Usually I try to keep my slides sort of light on text, but I wanted you to see each and every move and each and every recommendation that we're making in detail. You can also trace these back to the ordinance itself, and I've included the sections as well. So the first area that we're going to talk about is permitting and regulations. And so these requirements will provide regulation that is consistent with the regulations that are, that are sort of imposed on Pacifica's other businesses. And the first group is that we're going to require the sidewalk vendors to obtain a business license and a vending permit. Now, based on our estimated staff time to issue, to issue an annual vendor permit, and by the way, this is a new permit, we're recommending an initial permit fee of $100. This permit will expire annually, and so they will have to come in and renew every year. And this, if, if, this is acceptable by council, we'll have to bring back a separate resolution to put this in place. And again, that's, these are our recommendations. Yes, this is a conversation, yes.
What's our, what's our regular business fee, business license fee?
It is $40 for businesses that have projected income of $25,000 and lower. So zero to 25,000 is $40. It's a flat fee. Anything over 25,000, I think it's 63 cents per thousand.
Is that just a number that we came up with, or is that based on?
The what? The business license? It's been in, it's been in statute for a number of years.
I just feel like that's a low number, that's why.
Well, when we get to the budget process, you may see, you may see another proposal, but I won't, I won't get into that now.
Okay, thanks.
Yes. I don't want to give away too many surprises. Any, any more questions on that particular issue? Okay. So the next, the next group is the administration. And so the administrator, the ordinance designates the Assistant City Manager as the administrator or designee. So who is authorized to issue vending permits. It's probably because the Finance Department will be issuing these permits. We'll maintain a list of parks and facilities and make sure that the sidewalk vendors are aware of all the parks and facilities and, and that we'll keep a copy of the vending permit as well. We're also looking to make sure that the vending permit is visible. And it's something that we can hand them and they can keep in a laminated folder and something that can hang off the cart. So one would know immediately if this was a valid permit. The administrator is also authorized to develop and enforce the rules and regulations. That's similar to our authority with the other business licensing activities. And so that's the permitting and regulation recommendations. Operational requirements.
Lorenzo?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So this in regards to regulations, right? You want questions now about regulations? Because I have a whole page of questions.
We can, it's however you want to handle it.
Okay. Can we prohibit them from selling cigarettes? Based on our last agenda item?
That's a...
Well, that's not part of the law. I mean, that, that's not related to sidewalk vending, so...
So can we prohibit a vendor from selling cigarettes, cannabis, or alcohol from a cart? You haven't mentioned?
No, I, I, I agree.
You haven't mentioned any prohibitions in SB 946.
Right, right. I think we would have to look into our normal business licensing to see if that answer's there. All we're doing is licensing this particular sort of vehicle for the sale of merchandise and food. But as far as the type of merchandise, that should be addressed somewhere in our business licensing ordinances. I mean, not every operation can sell liquor. You've got to have the ABC permit. Not every operation can sell cannabis because you've got to go through our particular process here in Pacifica in order to sell.
But cigarettes, because we prohibit them on the beach, so can you prohibit a cart on the, on Lindemore parking lot?
I'm not, I am not sure as I sit here at the moment.
Ooh, I stumped.
You stumped the city attorney.
It says approved by the Health Department.
It's been six years and I stumped her.
Right, right. Well, Mayor Vada Los may have something there.
It says approved by the Health Department under the county health permit.
Okay. So...
So it would depend on what that said.
Yeah, but we prohibit cigarettes on Lindemore Beach, so what good is it to have a cart there selling cigarettes on Lindemore Beach?
Well, we prohibit smoking.
Oh, smoking, wow.
Right. So I would say first we'd have to look into how, how do we regulate cigarettes currently? The, the sale of cigarettes. I don't know what that is, but those regulations would certainly apply to the sidewalk vendors. I just don't know what, what is contained in those regulations, whether it's city regulations, county regulations. We'd have to look into that. But to answer your question about whether or not a sidewalk vendor can be regulated in addition, I'm, I'm not certain. If we can prohibit cigarettes, I think that we can prohibit just about anything. So I, that's the question. Can we prohibit anything from being sold? That's a different question than, than can they legally sell cigarettes? Because if they, perhaps they can't legally sell cigarettes because they don't comply with our rules.
There's a tobacco retail license fee.
Oh, we have a tobacco retailing ordinance.
Okay, so we probably can prohibit them?
So...
Or do they just pay a fee to the tobacco retailer?
Well, we need to, we need to look at those regulations.
Okay. We also take and prohibit them from city-sponsored events, right? What about school carnivals? Because all the schools have carnivals, you know, for the kids to come to. Can a guy open up a hot dog stand in front of the school?
Right, right. That's a, that's a good question. Can I, can I, can we talk about that when I, when I get to that part of the ordinance?
Oh, okay. I see. You were talking about permitting and regulation.
Okay. Yeah, there's a, there's this part in the ordinance, especially for the special events. And so, yeah, definitely. Let's talk about that then. Okay, so I'll just keep moving on. And again, if you have questions, please let me know, okay? And so the next group is of recommendations, is the requirements which, again, provide adherence for health, safety, and regulatory, cart size and, and hours of operation and ADA compliance. And so what we're recommending is that every cart used to vend food must be approved by the Health Department. And that it may only vend the types of food that are listed and approved by the Health Department under the county health permit. A cart used for sidewalk vending must obtain, possess, and prominently display a valid vending permit, which I mentioned earlier. And also required permits that are issued by other public health agencies such as the county health permit. A cart used for sidewalk vending must be placed and used at all times in compliance with the terms and conditions of the vending permit that we issue. And all other applicable laws, including the California Retail Food Code, if food is sold. Yes, sir?
So will the permit we issue be site-specific? So like you can only do it at the corner of Beach Boulevard and Solata?
You cannot do that.
We can't do that. We can't, we can't limit the, limit the vendor to a certain location. That's against the state law.
Okay.
Yeah. So the next group of recommendations are also just continuation of the operational requirements. And we'll go with the next one, letter D, that no cart that is used for sidewalk vending may exceed. And so what we've done is we've basically put limits on the size of the cart. And so we're saying it can't be more than 72 inches in length, can't be wider than 54 inches or height or including roof or awning of 78 inches. So, so we're, we're really kind of laying down the requirements here to, to make sure that the carts aren't oversized. And we're also saying that the condiment table, no larger than 48 inches and, and 20, 40 inches long, 24 inches wide, and that a trash receptacle, no larger than 20 gallons in capacity. And so all of those, so that's going to be a cart that's going to be pretty specific. It's also going to pretty, be a pretty self-contained cart as well. Letter E, sidewalk vendor must operate accordingly, according to the approved hours of operation. And so we intend on putting the hours of operation on the vending permit. And so we may impose sort of reasonable hours of operations for the vendors. And for the sidewalk vendors in non-residential areas, the administrator may limit those hours in a manner, manner consistent with the other businesses. So we've got to, it'll, it'll be a decision that the City Manager, myself, and the City Attorney will make regarding the hours of operation with the input of my business licensing staff. Yes, sir?
Okay, would a, like on Fisherman's War, if you see the people playing the musical instruments and selling their CDs. Is that a vendor under our ordinance? And would they, they have a rack? They don't have a cart? But can we prohibit?
Yeah, we've, they've got a rack. However, we do have prohibitions against noise.
Okay.
Yeah.
So then he could actually, or she, be prohibited from selling the CDs on the street?
You can sell the CDs on the street, but what we, what we're going to prohibit is any loud playing of that music.
So I think a, a good way to look at this, instead of looking at the specific types of sales, you know, cigarettes I understand, but I, I understand, I believe that we have other regulations that address that. That what we're trying to do and what the state is trying to do is to have just standard regulations for all vendors, no matter what they sell, that, but they all need to be regulated in the same manner. They need to have the same looking carts, so they're all on the same playing field. So we won't have a lot of deviations on what the carts look like, where they can locate, hours that they can locate. But we will have deviations on what they're vending, what they're selling.
Can, can we prohibit, all right, there's, we have stuff in here regarding motors for transportation. But what if you have a motorized cart that, you know, to keep the ice cream cold? Can we, you know, some of those engines can be kind of loud. Can we limit, you know what I mean, whether it's by decibels or noise? Can they have a propane tank on their cart?
Well, we can, we couldn't regulate things of that nature. I'm, I don't believe that our ordinance is that specific with those types of regulations. So to answer your question, yes, we can. I'm, I'm not sure that, that the ordinance as drafted does that, though.
Right. Does that specifically prohibit propane tanks?
Deirdre?
How does this apply to Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts selling their stuff out front of Safeway or Sun Valley Market? Is that considered private property and not applicable?
I think that's considered private property. And that's, because it's definitely not city property.
This only applies to vending on public rights of way.
Okay, thanks.
Is there a way we can prohibit? Like when we did the cannabis licensing, didn't we have one, one entity come in and try to get applied like 10 different times? Can we limit the franchises of carts or the McDonald's of carts type of thing?
You can't limit the number of carts at all.
Right.
So one person could own the hot dog carts in Pacifica type of thing?
Yes, it's possible.
Okay.
Okay. Any more questions? Okay, so I'll, I'll move on. And to letter F, and that no vending cart, condiment table, or trash receptacle may be left on the sidewalk after the sidewalk vendor's stated closing time. G is that the sidewalk vendor must maintain a clean, trash-free 20-foot radius from the sidewalk vendor's stationary cart during the hours of operation and must leave the area clean. And so one of the things that was posed to me by the Beach Coalition was what about single-use plastics? And since that's already sort of outlawed here, that's not going to be an issue. Because, you know, we'll make sure that the vendors understand that that, those plastics are illegal here in Pacifica, so you'll have to find another way. So as we move on to the more operational requirements. So the sidewalk vendors that vend food must provide a trash receptacle for customers and must ensure proper disposal of customer trash. The receptacle must be large enough to accommodate customer trash without resorting to existing trash receptacles located on any block for use by the general public. Letter I, stationary vendor cart that vends food must be operated within 200 feet of an approved and readily available toilet and hand-washing facility. So the reason that that's there is to make sure that the folks who are vending food have access to water to make sure that their tools, material, hands, all remain clean. And so we thought, just making sure that they were close enough to water so they can keep things clean. That's, that's why that provision is recommended. I'm sensing questions.
Well, I don't want to disturb the flow, but it did occur to me, what if someone had their own hand-washing station? That's, because there's health requirements. That's, because there's health requirements around that. I know from lots of volunteering I've done and things. So if they met that criteria, would that suffice? I know you don't know the answer to that.
Well, I, I think it would have to be approved, right? So I'm, I'm sure the city would have the authority to determine whether or not those facilities were adequate. And presumably, if they were adequate, then, you know, they're, they're approved.
It says toilet and hand-washing.
In here. Then, then...
Is that a statewide thing, then, that we would just be subject to? Or is that something we control? That's, I guess, where I'm not clear.
No, this is something that we control.
Yeah, we control this.
These regulations are regulations that the city is imposing for its own policy region, reasons, which is why if you think that there's a better policy or different policy, now's your opportunity to suggest that.
Okay.
But these are not required by state law.
Okay, thank you.
No question. So if the requirement is to have your vending cart near a toilet and hand-washing facility, you don't have a contract with, according to the regulation, some private property owner to use theirs, then I think the vending, sidewalk vending would be limited to our public facilities around these areas, right? Chart Park, Lindemar Beach, Rockaway, and our parks? Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. So, all right. Again, these are just, these are recommendations, but they're informed recommendations. So we've laid it out, we've laid this all out for you, so we can have this conversation. So I'm going to move on, and again, we can come back to this. The sidewalk vendors must comply with all applicable federal, state, and local laws, regulations, and ordinances. Next one is no signs that are not attached to the vending cart may be used or displayed. The vendors may, may not set up tables, chairs, or structures otherwise approved by the city. They may not access city power sources without the authorization of the city. No sidewalk vendor or vending cart may use a device that produces a loud noise, nor may the vendor use, operate, or operate any loudspeaker, public address system radio, sound amplifier, or any similar device. Vending of services is prohibited. The vendors shall comply with all requirements relating to food service, food service ware, plastic cutlery, plastic stirrers, plastic beverage straws set forth in our current law. Sidewalk vendors shall not vend, set up a vending cart, or otherwise operate any, in, within any marked parking space or stall in any public parking lot. And so those are the operational recommendations. So we move on to the recommendations regarding residential areas, and there's just two. And that no stationary vending cart may be used to vend within a residential zone area. And a roaming sidewalk vendor may use a roaming vending cart within a residential zone and must move continuously, except when necessary, to complete a sale. I'm sensing questions. Okay. The next is, the next group of recommendations are recommended to assure minimal impact on user recreational experience. So no sidewalk vendor may place or leave any vending cart as specified in the next group. No vending cart may be chained or fastened to a utility pole, sign, tree, or other object in the public right-of-way. No vending cart may impede the flow of pedestrian traffic by reducing the path of travel to less than four feet. We've also got ADA implications as well, so we want to make sure that we're always abiding by that. C, no person shall vend from a human-powered or non-motorized conveyance such as a pushcart stand and various other things on any roadway as defined by the vehicle code. So that's always a good thing, to stay off of Highway One and doing this action. Notwithstanding any specific recommendations in this chapter, no sidewalk vendor may install, use, or maintain a vending cart where placement endangers the safety of any persons. And now, the next group of recommendations relates to the vending in parks. And bear with me, we've only got three more slides to go. So the next, so this group, we want to, basically sidewalk vending in city parks, mini parks and beaches shall be prohibited except for on paved surfaces and decomposed granite pathways designated for pedestrian uses. So the, so the policy objective here was to keep the commercial activity off of the sand. And so we wanted to, and that's where these recommendations, especially that first one, comes in. So the city council may by resolution adopt additional requirements. So if you think this is your only shot at this, you still have the opportunity to amend whatever you put in place. So city council may by resolution adopt additional requirements consistent with the government code for city-owned or operated parks. And so we, again, we still have that option. No vendor may, and I'm moving on to B, no vendor may vend within twenty-five feet of another vendor. So this is in place to keep the concentration of vendors, I wouldn't say to a minimum, but at least it, it doesn't, when you show up at a city park, it's not a crowd of vendors. They've got to be twenty-five feet apart. Yes, ma'am?
Most of our mini parks are in residential areas, so then would those, would it be prohibited in those mini parks? Okay.
Yes. It would be, you would have to adhere to everything that I've just read in the mini park. So if you've got vendors in the mini park, they still have to be twenty-five feet away from each other.
But if that mini park were in a residential area, and it's prohibited unless they were continuously moving in that mini park?
Exactly. Okay, well, we'll...
Just have to keep walking around the mini park.
If it's, but is it, if it's designated as a mini park?
Right.
They should...
Let me, let me answer that. So the, the specific would rule over the general, so we're specifically talking about mini parks. So for purposes of the mini park, these are the regulations that apply?
Mm-hmm. So... But then I'm confused, if the mini park's in a residential area?
Then that, then this is related to mini parks in residential areas.
Oh, it is? So in other words, it's allowed in residential areas?
Well, it's allowed in mini parks in residential areas.
Wow. Hmm.
Really? Because what, residential areas usually means where there are homes.
Yeah.
But if there's a, if there's, if it's a mini park, then there are not necessarily homes directly around or in the mini park?
Well, like, around the block here, there's a mini park. It's a gorilla and a climbing wall, and a pump house. And there's like homes literally right around it. And so a vendor could go in there, as long as they're keeping moving and staying on the decomposed granite and sell things.
They wouldn't even have to move.
They don't have to move?
It says, oh, that's right, they don't have to, well, no, I was thinking about the residential moving thing.
Right, right, yeah. It's, it's, yeah, this is, this is sort of the, you know, those areas that we really have to analyze, and it's good that we have the, the city attorney present to help us work through this stuff. I'm not a lawyer, but I play one on TV, so...
Hey, you're on TV now.
Oh, okay. Too much Perry Mason this weekend. So, so I'm going to move on to letter C, that sidewalk vending may be prohibited on any sand surface, on any beach as designated in current law. No stationary sidewalk vendor shall set up a stationary sidewalk cart within twenty feet of any sand surface.
Sand in the mini park. So that totally limits the beach? Because any...
Twenty feet.
Twenty feet from sand?
You're getting the picture.
Okay, yeah, all right.
Moving on.
So that limits the promenade?
Yeah. Unless, unless like that little outpost right there, where you're walking to the parking area, is twenty-five feet from the sand, then yeah, that's probably the one spot you can vend.
Okay.
Took me long enough.
Letter, letter E is sidewalk vendors may not possess, sell, or provide any persons any bottle, cup, dish, tumbler, jar, or container having an exterior made of glass within any city park, mini park, or beach. Sidewalk vending is prohibited on any municipal pier or within fifty feet of the entrance of such pier in any direction. So now we move to special events. Were there any questions? I, I saw a lot of facial reaction, but I, I haven't seen any questions. Okay. So the next one, I believe Councilman O'Neill brought up a question about this area, this particular section. So we're recommending that no sidewalk vending is allowed within three hundred feet of all borders of a city-sponsored or city-permitted temporary or special event within the time period commencing one hour prior, one hour before until an hour after the event. Now, the event, and I put this in the subsect, subsect, subsection A, the little A, yeah. Such events include any event that requires an encroachment permit, or a special event permit, or any other permit as, or authorized by the city, including filming events, parades, and, and various other things.
What about like football games at Terranova?
Are those city events?
No. But the schools are considered private property, right? But it's a public event.
Well, if they're on public rights-of-way, then this, this ordinance and the state law would apply. So whether it's... No, school district property or city property, if the school district has a public right-of-way in their property, that's where these vendors can vend.
What is the definition of a public right-of-way?
It's a legal term that there is a, an actual easement that is recorded with the county, and it is a public right-of-way.
Okay, so you're talking about a public road. So when it's just the driveway of the school, they can prohibit them to be three hundred feet from their border of the school?
If it's, if it's not a public right-of-way.
Well, the streets the public right-of-way are around the school.
What about the sidewalk?
Sidewalk.
The sidewalk in front is...
Public right-of-way. Right, but they have to be three hundred feet from the border.
This law only allows the sidewalk vending in public rights-of-way. What happens on private property that is not a public right-of-way, this ordinance isn't intended to address that? And so, you know, whatever the school district does, we're not regulating that either.
Well, no, I'm just concerned because these are major events for schools. I mean, you know, the, because the parents are running a snack shack at the football games, which supports all the sports programs, and you want some guy out there selling the hot dogs and everything, it's basically taking money away from the sports programs, is what I'm concerned about.
And this, this ordinance does not address that.
Why can we prohibit vending from, from a city-sponsored event or city-permitted temporary or special event, but we cannot do that for like a school?
We, we can regulate sidewalk vendors only in the manner now that is prescribed by state law.
Right.
And the state law is now saying that we cannot prohibit sidewalk vendors in public What we do on private property is different. So if the school district has private property, they can do, they can prohibit anybody from being on private property, same way we can prohibit people from being on our private property. So that's up to the school district.
Okay, so you're saying the city property can be considered private property?
Correct. That does not include a public right-of-way.
Okay. I've never heard it, the city, I knew school districts were, were considered private property, but I never heard the city being considered private property.
Well, if we own, you know, the land that we own that is not a public right-of-way is city property, not, not the public's property, we can prevent people from, you know, entering, you know, except for during business hours, but...
Okay, I understand.
So the next recommendation is that no sidewalk vendor is allowed within three hundred feet of all borders of a certified farmer's market. And certification is located within current law. And the next item, there's, for the purposes of determining the geographical restrictions set forth in this section, the, the applicable borders or, or of any temporary or special event, farmer's market or swap meet shall be based on the area set forth or otherwise described in the permit, or other authorization issued by the city. The next section lays out some activities that the administrator shall, shall act on, and that they maintain a copy of the permits, make sure that the designee is provided with notice regarding the issuance of temporary or special permits if notice is required. Nineteen, one more slide after this one. Enforcement, in that sidewalk vending is, sidewalk vending in violation of this chapter will not be punishable as a criminal infraction or misdemeanor, and it will be subject to administrative citations. And so in section A one, we've laid out the citations for vending without a valid permit. And so the Pacifica PD and the Public Works Rangers will partner to, to enforce this section. Section A two lays out the violations of this chapter. Yes?
Section A one, three? Can you explain that? So within one year of the first violation, so, can you explain that sentence?
So we've got an administrative fine of one thousand for a third violation, and each subsequent violation within one year of the first violation. So if it's a situation where in January, the vendor is cited for vending without a permit, first time is two fifty, again, it's five hundred, and again, it's a thousand if you get, if you get cited a fourth time, it's another thousand.
Right. And then a fifth time? What's the within-one-year first violation mean?
Meaning that all of these, that, that you have to have four of these within one calendar year.
In order to what? What do you get?
No, the, it's, it's not, it really is just telling you how the fines increase after each violation that you get, except for after three, each violation after three is a thousand-dollar fine. So after the first violation in January, you'd pay a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar, two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fine. If you had another violation in February, you'd pay five hundred, which would total seven fifty. If you had another violation in March, you'd add a thousand to that, so that person would be paying seventeen fifty. If you had another violation in April, they would pay another thousand dollars.
Right, and then the following year, they would start back at 250? Okay, that's what that means, got it, thanks.
But-
Couldn't you put in-
It's, 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 it would be a rolling year, so it's-
Right, so it's not January to January, it's when your first violation is-
Right.
Got it, okay.
Wouldn't it be better to put within one year of a prior violation? Because then it's truly rolling. If you put first violation, the guy in, in the next January, he could be saying, well, my first violation was last January, so I, it's only 250 now. Okay, but if you say within a year, that first violation moniker keeps changing, moving and rolling along.
But what, what, what this language allows us to do is in 1-3, it says within a year of the first violation, but what this allows us to do is work with Pacifica PD and the park, and the, the Public Works Rangers to track when that first violation was. Because there'll be some sort of a citation and if, and if it's within one year of that citation, and as, 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 as city attorney mentioned, it'll be a rolling year, but it will depend on the date of that first citation. So it's not necessarily a prior, it's when you get that first citation and you get three subsequent to that, we need to make sure that that, whatever that fourth one is, and if it's greater than 12 months, you know, we have certain rules, but if it's within 12 months of the date on that first citation, then the thousand dollars applies.
Well, I mean, if the guy's paying a thousand dollars every month, at what point can we just kind of kick him out of Pacifica?
Yeah, and that, and that's what I'm-
And that's the, uh, that's the, uh, that's the next slide.
Depends on what he's selling.
That's the next slide, you must be clairvoyant. Because the last slide is also on the enforcement area. And that the city may request a sidewalk vendor to remove any cart that is in violation of this chapter. If a sidewalk vendor refuses to remove the cart or the cart's been abandoned, the city may cause the cart to be removed and may, after adequate notice, subsequently dispose of the cart, if not claimed by the vendor. So we have a remedy, we have remedies. But there is no criminal prosecution.
What about taxes?
Well, in your, in your staff report, under the fiscal impact, you'll see my preliminary calculation for the fiscal impact of these vendors.
Fifty, $500?
Yeah. Because I'm, right now, I'm projecting that, that we'll see, and I really don't have a way to tell you exactly how many folks are going to show up. But I am right now projecting, this is what happens if 10 sidewalk vendors do business in the city of Pacifica. It may be less, it may be more, but at least you have the formula now to figure out how this is going to impact us financially.
How are you going to collect that?
Well, we get the business license fee upfront.
And that's it, that covers it? Oh, up to $25,000?
Right.
Right, okay.
So we're on packet page 98 for folks following.
Yeah, I'm looking at it right now.
And so the vendor permit, we get that upfront. The city share of sales tax, so we're expecting the vendors to go through the process and submit sales tax promptly to the Board of Equalization and which in turn will come back to us. And so we expect the total revenue per, uh, the total revenue per vendor to be about 550 a year. Again, could be more, could be less, depending on sales, depending on the amount of the number of vendors.
Okay, and then my last question is, given all this information, like when we did the cannabis zones, the green zones, we put together a map like where the, where these cannabis retailers can open. Do we have some sort of a map where, or is there just-
We, we can't, we can't designate where they're going to be.
Well, well, we can't, we can, we can do a map based on, on what you just proposed, right?
We can.
So there's like, in Sharp Park, I think there's one spot where, and I'm thinking like where the anchor used to be, like out-
The thing is, doing a map would, would definitely give the impression that the city is designating where the vendors are to operate.
All right, you're, I, point taken, but I'm just, in my head, there's a couple parks.
Okay.
Well, every single park, I think, as long as it had some decomposed granite, would, would allow vendor.
Right.
Virtually none of the beaches, because I can't imagine any beach where the sidewalk or any decomposed granite is with, is outside of, is within the 25, you know what I'm saying, 30-feet zone. So none of our beaches. And, and I'm curious, what did the economic development manager think of this?
Well, because we would like them to, to be able to make a living.
Right.
Because these are, are people who are trying to make a living for their families and-
And, and, and we understand that, but we think that there is adequate, there is adequate space for them to do business.
Hi, Thomas.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, Thomas Myers, Economic Development Manager. Given the restrictions that the state has imposed upon us in terms of limiting sidewalk vendors, I think what we want to do is as much regulation as possible to keep the, to keep public safety and to make it a fair playing field for those vendors as compared to brick-and-mortar stores. There could be opportunities where there would be sales that aren't present in Pacifica now or there'll be other, either activities or service, or not services or goods that'll be sold that could increase our tax base and make it attractive for people to come to Pacifica and to work in Pacifica. So I'm not looking at it as a negative, I'm just looking at it as an opportunity.
Thanks, Thomas.
And if I may revisit an earlier question and provide a clarification regarding selling cigarettes. So our tobacco retailing ordinance would prohibit sale of cigarettes from anything that's not stationary. So I think we'll, there's probably other sections of county code or other that would probably prohibit the stationary vendor thing too, but we'll, you know, in the next iteration of this, we'll check on that. And if there does need to be a change, we'd have to bring that before the council.
So obviously this doesn't apply to food trucks because they're outside of the, the size and also they're motorized.
So there, there is, in the ordinance toward the end, we're actually updating a very old part of the city code. I think it's almost 60 years old. To make sure that those are sort of motorized vendors are in adherence with the vehicle code, state vehicle code as it stands right now. And I call that the ice cream man provision. But it's section 4-7 dot 1113, vehicles for vending and transportation for hire. So we took the opportunity to update that as well with this, with this ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
And Lorenzo, so this won't limit, so there's some businesses that's like sell out in front of their businesses now. Like barbecues or things that are happening right out in front of, of places of business. That's not going to prohibit that, is it?
Well, that's on private property.
Like a park mall?
The pier?
Oh, that's chit-chat. That is a franchisee with the city.
And that's city property.
See?
So we'll have to work through that, but, yeah. So that's our, those are our initial recommendations. And as I mentioned earlier, we can always come back once we see the activity on our beaches and come back with lessons learned. And if we have recommendations for modifying the activity or future regulation, we'll be happy to come back and do that. But again, you have all of our, sort of, you have all of our major recommendations before you.
And I actually have two more points to make. The first is the city attorney is stumped no longer. We, I, I have looked at our retailer license ordinance and there can be no sales of tobacco from any location other than a fixed location. So a sidewalk vendor could not sell tobacco.
They have stationary carts.
They would also, any person who's not in a fixed location.
Just have to move the stationary cart, so.
And pay the tobacco license fee.
But the intent of this ordinance is that they would need to have brick and mortar. That would be my, my interpretation. And then the second point is, given the discussion, I think it makes sense regarding, you know, numerous violations that we insert into section 4-18.04 regarding application requirements. B, we add a new subsection G that says vending permits will expire one year after the date of issuance. And then G, if there is any prior history of violations under this chapter, this could form the basis for the administrator to deny issuance or renewal of a permit.
Good job.
Isn't she great?
Yep.
Yep.
How many people have, I know that some time ago, there were people who wanted to put on the beach food and also like renting of surfboards. So have there been people asking for this? I know this is a state law that we have to abide by. It's been a long time since I remember anything related to that.
I wouldn't know offhand, but perhaps Director Perez might be aware of any demand for services on the beach.
He doesn't want to get up.
Let's see. What can we ask that we can lose here?
It, it could be that something like renting a surfboard would be a service and this ordinance prohibits services.
Ah, no services allowed.
Council members, Mike Perez, Department of Parks, Beach and Recreation, could you repeat the question, please?
The question was, have we had demand? I recall some time ago, someone wanted to put hot dog carts out on the beach and also a surfboard rental facility at the beach.
Well, we don't have any demand for that, but we also don't allow that now. Council decided not to move forward with that 10, 11 years ago, something like that. So we do not allow that. And I would say, in the 10 years that I've been the director, I've maybe talked to somebody about it maybe five times, you know, for food, something like that.
So we don't have a large demand?
No.
Okay. Thank, thank you. Deirdre has a question, then, Mike.
Go ahead.
And so say we hear, we, the first reading of this this evening and we go all the way to the third reading and then, you know, Frontierland Park, somebody moves in and, and the whole neighborhood is up in arms. Do we still have the ability to make revisions?
We have the ability by, you have the ability to make revisions by a resolution.
But we couldn't ever restrict it in a park.
Right. We've always got to make sure that we're adhering to the state law. We have no leverage there. Okay, so we, we can't limit where they are, we can't keep them out of parks. So we just have to make sure that whatever actions we take can be construed that we're faithfully following state law.
Okay.
Question in regards to Lindemar Beach. Okay, we're prohibited on the sand and we prohibit within 20 feet of the sand. Well, whatever, if someone goes to the very, very outside perimeter of the parking lot, they're not on sand and they're beyond either 20, 25, or 30 feet. Depending on who, which council member remembers, okay?
Right, right.
So that means someone could open up a cart there then, right? If they want to park on the very, very outer edge.
There are opportunities for commerce. I think just, just from a objective, programmatic, objective standpoint, we wanted to make sure that the user experience was minimally impacted by this kind of activity. We, we don't want a situation where you've got a family on the beach enjoying themselves and all of a sudden we're inundated by someone trying to sell them something. And so it's, it's best to sort of put limits on, you know, where we can, where we can ask folks to provide this commerce.
First vendor goes down.
Again, just to clarify that that 20 feet from sand applies to stationary vendors. So not the, not the mobile vendors.
Oh. The sand?
Right.
On the sidewalk?
Correct.
Yeah.
Not on the sand, but on the sidewalk.
Keep moving.
Yeah.
Got to keep moving.
So, so, so I believe over here on, you know, right out front here, a mobile vendor could be going down the promenade, but not a, a stationary vendor couldn't set up because it's within 20 feet from the sand.
As long as they don't go within 50 feet of the-
Is this considered a residential area?
Of the pier.
Right.
But still. And certain, certain amount of space-
The promenade's not a residential area.
Close to the franchisee.
Right. Got it.
Can they go on the berm? If they have an all-train cart?
The, the, the berm is not our property.
So it's public property though, right?
Public right-of-way?
Well, the state can't restrict it then, can they?
No, that is, it is city property, city of San Francisco property.
But is it a public right-of-way?
Yeah, it depends if it's a public right-of-way.
So they could go on the berm, huh?
If it's a public right-of-way, it may not be a public right-of-way.
I have a question. I can't find it now, something about bus stops.
Yes.
The distance to bus stops. I'm thinking about the corner where Highway 1 and Crespe and the bus stop that's there. There's a sidewalk there. Is that a place someone could do this? Because there's also something about roadways too. So I'm trying to imagine if someone could set up a cart or stationary or moving cart on that side of the beach.
Right, so are, these recommendations limit the vendor activity near public transit? ADA ramps, I'm back on slide nine, ADA ramps, fire hydrants, and driveways. And let me see if I can find the specific code.
Within 10 feet of a bench or shelter used for public transit.
Oh, just 10 feet. So 10 feet away from the shelter, the bus stop, there's sidewalk for a little while that goes right along that parking lot. And then it kind of goes down to that path, you know, that below, you know, along the fences.
Right.
But that's kind of a spot people could potentially, right?
Could.
So here's my question. I know the size of the cart because it says so. But if you plop that in the middle of the sidewalk, now it's not navigable.
You've got to have four feet.
Oh, that was the piece I missed.
You've got to have four feet.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just flipping through here trying to find the code.
It's okay.
Okay. Thanks.
So we make a motion now?
Yes.
Okay, to introduce, waive the first reading and read by title only the ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the city, oh, as amended.
As amended.
As amended. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Pacifica enacting a sidewalk vending program under Title IV, Chapter 18 of the Pacifica Municipal Code, and amending Title I, Chapter 6, and Title IV, Chapter 7, Chapter 9, Chapter 10 of the Pacifica Municipal Code.
Second.
Please vote. That passes 5 to 0. And the meeting is adjourned, says use gavel.
And the meeting is adjourned, says use gavel.